Time is now 9:43 a.m. and a form of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of November 14, 2023 is called through order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order priority. Are there any items that board members would like to add or delete from the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to amend the agenda to add a resolution on keeping schools and students safe from violence resolution to discussion and action items.
So we have a motion, we have support. Would you like to speak to your resolution or your motion?
Yes, I'll read it into the record and speak to it. Whereas behavioral threats need to be identified and reported to prevent gun and other types of violence in schools, and current behavioral threat assessment and management BTAM training is optional for schools in Michigan. Whereas BTAM training would promote the growth of a positive relationship between the local police departments and school communities, a recent community-oriented policing service's fact sheet released by the Department of Justice, or DOJ, that is focused on developing school-based partnerships highlights the need to engage school resource officers, SROs, when behavioral threats present imminent danger. To quote from this memorandum, "An increased understanding of an SRO's roles and responsibilities, including an understanding that school code of conduct violations and routine discipline of students, remains the responsibility of school administrators and that law enforcement actions such as arrests, citations, tickets, or court referrals are only to be used as a last resort for incidents that involve criminal behavior or when it becomes necessary to protect the safety of students, faculty, and staff from the threat of immediate harm." Whereas the Model Student Code of Conduct of 2019 was adopted by the State Board of Education and states. In paragraph 31, serious violations, legal mandates, and community safety may require removal of individuals subject to MCL, who possess weapons, commit arson, or engage in criminal sexual conduct, make bomb threats, or engage in verbal assault, and who commit physical assault against another. However, the U.S. Department of Education links school attendance with academic success and links exclusionary discipline with lower school performance and higher rates of students' academic failure. Recognizing exclusionary discipline's negative impact, the school community will reserve exclusion for only the most serious offenses. The district will employ disciplinary measures and early intervention diversion strategies with a focus on screening and treatment to minimize students' suspension time away from school and potential court involvement. Districts shall consider the seven factors in rebuttal presumption where appropriate before using exclusionary practices such as suspension and expulsion. Whereas multiple local parents of Oxford Community School District students who lost their lives to the failure of the appropriate reporting of behavioral threats and resulted in the gun violence that killed their children are calling for accountability and liability in schools. To quote Guidepost Solutions Report on Oxford Community Schools released on October 30th, it found that the board failed in its oversight of the district superintendent, Tim Throne, who did not ensure district policies were being followed. Specifically, the report alleged the absence of threat assessment guidelines in the district was a significant failure, and the responsibility for that which sits with the superintendent, the assistant superintendents, and the board. Whereas the State Board of Education acknowledged the importance of administrative accountability in preventing gun violence in schools and approved a resolution urging action in October of 2022. We stated at that time, whereas there has been a demonstrated pattern at some schools that leadership has not always acted in an immediate nature when there is a behavioral threat to a student themselves or others with or without the advice of school counselors, it is imperative that all threats are taken seriously. Therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Education urges the legislature to require bylaw that all Michigan K-12 school administrators and other appropriate education providers involved in threat assessments be required to take mandatory BTAM training and for the Michigan Department of Education to audit individual districts' threat assessment guidelines to ensure compliance with such a law. The State Board of Education should also revisit the most recently revised version to the Model Student Code of Conduct and ensure that the spirit of disciplinary action with a student that presents a behavioral threat to themselves or others is both immediate and effective in the nature of preventing violence in schools and aligned with DOJ policy regarding notification to local SROs. Lastly, the State Board of Education recommends, strongly recommends, that any laws providing indemnity of liability on behalf of administrators and school personnel responsible in complying with reporting behavioral threats be amended to remove such protections in situations that involve the requirement to report. I'm presenting this resolution to the State Board of Education. I think it is most definitely a time to lead at this point in time. It's much like other industries where you learn required skills that save lives. In healthcare, you can align that with CPR. Every single person in a hospital is required to learn CPR, expected to perform that skill in the event that a life is to be saved. And I think that BTAM training is very much in alignment with that within schools, making sure we keep students safe. I think that we could talk further about infrastructure resources and what it looks like to build the capacity of this type of mandatory training, but we need to lead now in making the statement that this is what we expect moving forward.
We have a motion, we have a second. It's been read into the record. Any other discussion? We are talking, not about the merits of the resolution, we are talking about whether it should be placed on the agenda for further discussion and a vote. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. There is no question that school safety is extremely important, and I appreciate you taking the time to bring this resolution forward. And you're absolutely right. It is time to lead, and I believe this board has been doing that. A year ago, we passed a resolution regarding gun violence, and there've been other actions taken by this board, actions taken by staff and superintendent in speaking with the legislature in taking the lead and the legislature then in a bipartisan manner, which we certainly appreciate, providing more and more funding for mental health services within schools and those practical things to schools funding-wise in order for them to provide the most safe environment that they can. However, there's several statements in the resolution, in my opinion, need still to be vetted with other agencies throughout the state. While the spirit, the essence of the resolution regarding school safety is important, I'm unable to support placing it on the agenda right now until we've had a chance to understand more fully the process followed for schools to participate in training. Does the state police have the capacity at this point to service over 3,500 individual school buildings in Michigan? Do communities have resources to engage school resource officers? I think those questions need to be answered, or at least researched, maybe they can't be answered indefinitely, but at least researched from my perspective. So I would recommend that we take the time, ask staff to assist us in examining that and any other questions that need to be answered, and that we discuss this resolution with additional information at our next legislative committee meeting scheduled right now for January 3rd.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Anybody else on placement on the agenda? Dr. Pugh. Sorry, Ms. Tilly.
I just wanted to add that while you've been here and mentioned about the report that was done, we had not received that report. I did receive it yesterday from the Oakland County Prosecutor, who was also concerned about all of this and shared it with the board members. We definitely need to take time to go over that report and read that report. I think that will be helpful just to give us context of what's going on, because all of us are concerned about what happened. So we definitely need to have time to go over that. And I want to reiterate with Judy, we need to talk to stakeholders and make sure that there's capacity as far as funding for this. I know we had the training last month at our meeting, not training, but we had the presentation about the training at our last state board meeting, and they said basically it's free or low cost to schools. We need to know how much funding there is. Can they do all of the schools? And who all does this include? I know it says education providers. Can you be more specific about who you would want the training, who you would want to get the training?
Everyone, right? Like I said, with healthcare, you don't walk into a hospital without even coming in contact with a unit clerk that has been trained on how to give you CPR if your life needs to be saved. You should not walk into a school without someone having the skills to take care of an urgent and immediate situation to save lives. So I think that's the ground floor. I appreciate your guys' concerns about all stakeholders. I think the conversation needs to continue on that level then, and I would even say probably the most important stakeholders in this conversation are the parents in Oxford. And they're clearly demonstrating their willingness to come to the table and discuss what really was failed in that situation, and they lost their kids as a result of what failed. So as we look at reports, as we consider local leadership and the school board and the superintendents and all of the people that were involved in that situation, the parents are probably the number one stakeholder that we can learn most from.
So to be clear, you mean administrators, teachers?
Everyone. You walk into a school, you're protected.
So just as far as we're looking to build on this resolution, I think we should be more specific of who we want to get the training and make sure that, you know, there's capacity for all of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh.
And I just want to just reiterate what has been said by Board Member Pritchett and Tilly, and definitely make it clear that this is a very important issue that all of us are concerned about, and also lift up what a board member, Pritchett, mentioned in that on October 11th that we passed a resolution on safe school environments. Your resolution is a resolution on school safety from violence. And so I definitely think that we should look at this already passed resolution. That's something that I usually try to do when we come up with topics, is make sure that we're building on or that we're taking into consideration previous resolutions. I should note, Board Member Snyder, that you were one of two people who voted this motion down, the motion down for this resolution on school safe, on safe school environments. So there is a resolution. I would suggest that we take a look at this resolution. We do acknowledge the importance of this topic that we're talking about and a reason why we are all here today and dedicating our time and lives to this issue around keeping children safe. I do want to point out that I'm looking at the one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas in the resolution that was passed on October 11th, 2022, and it talks about professionals being trained. If you look at the sixth resolution that carries over and talks about training, the seventh whereas clause has, talks about $245 million that has been dedicated around, with bipartisan support, that included state funding for student mental health services and for schools to use dollars around school safety, around $210 million. There is, if you go down, there's another whereas clause in this resolution that was passed by six of the eight members on this board that talks about internal communications and training by professional staff. And in the be it resolved clause, there's additional suggestions that we make as a board. So I would just suggest that you look at the resolution that you voted down a year ago on safe school environments.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Lipton, to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing that I would like to add is that I do think it is important for this body to act with leadership, but I do believe that leadership comes with responsibility to not always necessarily be rushing to be the first at the front of the line, but to act with leadership that shows a degree of thoughtfulness as well as really delving into an issue that is incredibly important. Other board members have noted that there are reports, that there are a lot of stakeholders. We have a process in this body that I was very privileged to be, to lead, and now also I'm so thankful that Dr. Pritchett is leading a legislative committee where we can discuss and vet, and this body can also hold hearings. So I think that leadership, it's important to show leadership, and it's also important to show good leadership. And I think that this idea certainly has merit, but I think that we need to spend more time and get it right. And I think a resolution at this point would be, in my mind, premature. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Snyder, to you.
I just, I think, whoa, to suggest that this resolution is premature after lives have been lost and we have months since that happened, to have had significant discussion at this board table is mind-blowing to me. And quite honestly, it's part of the reason why this public, our public in the state of Michigan wants this body gone. That's not leadership. I'm going to be very clear and reiterate, the reason why I voted that resolution down in October of 2022 is because it fell just short of actually acting, actually leading. This resolution is about the requirement of that training, not the suggestion that it's a fancy thought or a good idea, but that in fact, lives were lost and we're going to require that training is mandatory. Again, other industries have this to save lives, that we can't sit here at this table and come to a bipartisan agreement that that's what's necessary post-Oxford, and that these parents are out here in this community and fighting for themselves, and the people they elected are not able to fight for them is a problem, a very significant problem. The three things that this therefore be it resolved paragraph suggests, we're not in that resolution. If we would like to revisit that resolution and amend it and pass it again together and do the next right thing, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Tilly.
So we all want to support Oxford, and that's why many of us voted for safer, safer schools resolution. And we definitely are not voting this down and saying we don't want to do anything with it. We are saying we need more time, we need to make sure there's capacity to give the program as well as MDE's capacity to audit, which is in the resolution as well. So there are things that need to be researched on this. And not only this, I would love for MDE and the board to work with MDE to come up with a few other things where we can be proactive and possibly pass a few resolutions to help not just support Oxford, but all of our schools in Michigan. Again, all of our hearts go out to Oxford. That is very grueling what they went through and very tragic, not just for the schools, but the whole community. So we definitely want to work on something that's just not going to happen this morning. It's, we'll continue to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly.
Thank you.
Give it a few more notes.
I have one more bite at the apple here, as you say.
I will, I will say something. I almost lost my thought. The, I agree, when there are, when there are issues that are urgent, such as this issue, I do think that there is opportunity for room for this board to take it up as an agenda item. My issue is that this has been an urgency for decades and definitely within the wake of the mass shooting at Oxford and MSU was a wake-up call to this urgency. We've acted and we will continue to provide guidance and support through MDE to our schools. So I don't want it, again, I want to be very clear, that there are those of us who have for a long time been acting in urgency, and so this resolution falls short of that urgency. We had an opportunity a year ago to give that input and have and have continued to work for the safety and healthy environments of children. So I just want to push back on the notion that we're not acting in urgency and that this body doesn't make room for urgent issues. We have and we continue to, we did, you didn't act on that urgency when we were acting.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder.
I did. I asked us to amend the resolution. You can go back and watch the video, but all I'm going to say, I'm going to end with this. What we've heard here today in not allowing this agenda to be discussed at the table in a timely fashion because it is urgent, because these parents are out here fighting for their kids that they've lost, is this, it's premature, that's what we're telling them, we're going to sit on it longer, it's not the right time playing political games, and we're suggesting the fact that our schools don't have the capacity to keep our students safe. That's what we're doing right now, and it's disgusting. What we could do today is discuss this resolution, we could come to an agreement, and we could make a statement and lead, and then we could work together on building the capacity to make sure students are safe and schools are safe, but you're choosing not to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. If we could have a, Mr. McMillan, you've not, you've not spoken to it.
Right. I generally am not too supportive of forcing locals to do something from the state level, but talking about safety, I do think that it's something that's reasonable to and urgent, actually. As any of the former legislators here knows, we don't have the ability at this table to pass laws, so we don't have to have anything thoroughly vetted and ready for a vote in law. All this resolution, therefore, the seventh paragraph is the most important part, it urges the legislature, it requires training, it would urge the legislature to require training and require MDE to audit districts to make sure they're doing it. It would require this board to revisit the most recently revised version, and it required this board, well, as this board strongly recommends, any laws providing indemnity of liability be removed. And so this is not something that we have to take months. Those months could be precious. You know, this is just saying that the legislature ought to get going on this. It would take the legislature, I'm sure, months, so we're talking about five or six or seven-month process. To wait an extra two months could be, could be a problem, could be, could result in some pretty bad things. So I, there's questions about capacity and all that, that would be worked out in the legislature, how to, how to make sure it happens. So, you know, I don't, I think that there's no reason not to act. If we put this on the agenda, we've got five hours, you could, Marty could work on it or do it over lunch. If you have any particular questions, if you don't like a whereas, you can remove it if you're uncomfortable because you haven't studied it enough. Whereas is aren't the, the, the action of a resolution, it's the therefore be it resolved. So there's really no reason not to take this up, and since there has been an attack by a member, you know, I could say that we did offer, as Member Snyder said, that we offered amendments. Unfortunately, they're not in the minutes. I do think that that would be a good addition, is to make sure that we see in the minutes have a full record of amendments so that we can see what those were easily, and the public could, but I'm certain that if the amendments were added, we would have been more than happy to support them for, for, so I mean, I would imagine those amendments were important and would probably made it better, the resolution, I'm sure it would. So, and maybe would have resolved any, any problems in the resolution. So I don't, again, I don't think there's any reason to wait on this, you know, I don't, to wait until January for a committee to take it up just doesn't seem reasonable at all, and like I said, there could be very problematic consequences, particularly, you know, even fatal consequences for waiting like this. So wait if you want, but I think that that's a problem.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. If we could have a roll call vote, Ms. Evans.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
Do we have any other motions to add items to the agenda? Dr. Pugh.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I would, I move to place a resolution on the agenda honoring the 100th birthday of Kathy N. Strauss. As many folks here know, Kathy served on this board for many years, and for anyone to be celebrating 100th of birthday is an honor, but to see our very own Kathy Strauss reach that mile marker and still be a spruce and spry as she is, would want to make sure that this body is honoring that. And so, should I read it or?
I don't think that's necessary at the moment. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Lipton, it was a photo finish. Any additional comment about adding this to the agenda? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And may I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Dr. Pritchett moves, Ms. Lipton seconds. Is there any discussion on the agenda as amended? Hearing none. Ms. Evans, please, a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I believe it's time now to introduce our board members. Ms. Evans, if you could please do us the honors.
You've just been listening to Dr. Rice, chairperson of the board. My apologies. Around the table is Dr. Pugh, and I don't have my list, I'm so sorry. Dr. Pugh, board president, co-Vice President, Ellen Lipton, Mitch, Dr. Mitch Robinson, board treasurer, nope, NASB delegate, sorry, Ms. Nikki Snyder, and Candace Jackson, the Michigan Teacher of the Year. Behind them is Ms. Tiffany Tilly, who is also the co-board, co-Vice President. To my right is Tom McMillan, Marshall Bullock, board treasurer, and Judy Pritchett, board secretary. Virtual with us today is Stephanie O'Day, the governor's ex officio member.
Thank you very much. Those who.
No notes.
Panic.
Those who wish to give public comment should sign up prior to 1:00 p.m., which is our approximate beginning of public comment today. You can sign up here in person, you can do it virtually at our website. First item on today's agenda for the committee, the whole meeting, is a presentation on Grow Your Own: Future Proud Michigan Educators from Lansing Eastern High School. During this presentation, we will hear from students and staff from Lansing Eastern. They will be presenting on the experiences and successes of their Grow Your Own program, future proud Michigan educators. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, deputy superintendent, Division of Educator Student and School Supports, Dr. Sarah Kate Levann, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, Ms. Robin Murray, teacher, Lansing Eastern High School, Ms. Lindsay Robinson, counselor, student placement at Patton Gill Middle School, and then we have a number of Lansing Eastern Quakers. Go Quakers. We won't bite students, we promise. We have Andrea, we have Genevieve, we have Ethan, we have Cameron, we've got the little waves going on, that's a good thing. And Bukhari Mayu.
Yep.
Okay, Maya.
Muya.
Muya. There you go, very good. And we also have our, we have our superintendent here from Lansing School District, Mr. Ben Shuldiner. Superintendent, could you give the king's way? There you go. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Have I missed anybody at the table? Okay, beautiful, all right. Hearing none, this is an informational presentation board, no action is required. You may be tested. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, Board. I am joined by Dr. Sarah Kate Levann, the Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, to introduce the esteemed Future Proud Michigan Educators Explore Program Leadership and Student Cohort of Lansing Eastern High School. They will share their goals and overall experiences, plus the benefits of this effort. Dr. Levann will briefly share the highlights of the recent Explore Conference and the Explore Program overall, for which Lansing Eastern was a highlight in its own right. Dr. Levann?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, students.
Good morning.
We had the great fortune to hear from them as panelist members of our Explore Conference in early October. They did a phenomenal job and we thought that you would benefit from hearing from them. Just really quickly, the Explore Program is just that, an opportunity for students to explore teaching as the profession of choice. It's a set of very flexible curricula and materials. The school district basically gets to decide which things they want to keep, which things they want to add, and the students make it their own. And you'll hear from them today how they made it their own and what they've accomplished. Ms. Murray?
Thank you.
Students, thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you. Well, once again, I would like to say good morning. And we are so honored, on behalf of the Lansing School District, to be a part of this presentation. And we're going to be cognizant of your time, so without further ado, we will start the slide presentation. Initially, when we set this up, and myself as well as Ms. Robinson, because she takes care of the placement for the second half of the students to get their actual experience in the buildings, and Patton Gill is our center school that we go to. However, we had to back up because it's very important for students to know what it is to be a true educator. We want to make sure that they have the most real-world application and experiences that we possibly can give to them. So I'm very much of a straight shooter, so I told them, I said, before you can go, you got to know who you are. So one of the things that we decided is that we had to have goals and what was going to be our equity levers. One, the knowledge of students are so important because if you don't understand your students, your student demographics, you're going to be lost. So no matter if you're rural, urban, suburban, you have to have that component of knowledge of students. You also must know the cognitive demand of each and every one of your students in your classroom, whether you have one hour, six hours, it doesn't matter. That is so important to build that equity lever in the classroom. The students are also taught the relationship trust because, again, without our students' trust, you can have the most dynamic lesson plan, unit plan, but if the students don't buy into it, it's really dead on arrival. And lastly, literacy. I teach my students that everyone in our building is a literacy teacher, from the cafeteria staff to the custodial staff, that we emphasize that. And you will hear from one of our students, Ms. Andrea, that literacy is so important to her in every movement that she does when she creates her lesson plans. The purpose, basically, that the students had to look at is who am I? Where am I going and how I'm going to get there? And why do you, what is your why? Why do you want to become an educator? Because, again, you have to understand where your leverage is, what the passion's going to be, and without that purpose and why, it is not something that you just go into. This is not the field that you're going to be able to not have that passion. We are not going to continue, if you were interested, there is a PowerPoint presentation slide that you can get. We would be more than glad to send to you. But we wanted to make sure that you understand that Lansing School District, this is not the first year. We have been engaged in this whole idea of growing our own program since 2021. And this is final thoughts of Merasa. I am proud to tell you that she is a full ride recipient of Northern University. Still get teary, I'm so sorry. She wants to be an educator, and she's doing it. So with her, I watched her grow from 11th grade to 12th grade in the classroom, creating her lesson plans. And we had an opportunity to host 23 students from South Korea. And Merasa made sure that from start to finish, they understood the importance of education here in our, in our district, Lansing School District, which we are definitely proud to lift up, no offense to anybody else, but we are Quakers here. So definitely, if you look at what she said at the end, overall, even if this program did not guide me into being an educator, it helped me become a more culturally responsive and aware person in general. And that's the one beautiful thing about when you're in education. There are so many different fields you can go into and still be able to bring that educational leadership. I would like to now turn it into the hands of our alumni.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Bukhari. I hope you are all doing well. I am a former student at Olivet College and a former student at Lansing Eastern High School, of course. And currently, I'm a senior organizer in the community of the 74th House District. And I feel like a lot of that confidence came from, you know, being in the program of, you know, the roots of FPME, which was Quakers in Motion. And I got a lot of the confidence and leadership skills from that and being able to work with a lot of students that were in the same position as me. Honestly, the reason why I do what I do is to be able to give students the chance to express their talent and have that confidence to open up and feel safe in an environment where that talent can be seen. A lot of students have talent, but it's hidden. So I want to be able to give them that safe space and environment to open up. Thank you.
Durante mi primera semana de preparación para ser futuros educadores, nos enfocamos en la importancia de conocer tu propia identidad. Mi madre se nos asignó nuestra primera tarea, y mientras que lo completaba, me di cuenta que yo misma tenía mis fúgiles propios. Muchas veces juzgamos a la gente por su identidades superficiales, como la edad, género, y la habilidad física. The reason why I read my portion off in Spanish is because I think it's very important for us to represent our culture, but as well as, in the future, I want to create and represent an environment that every single student will feel confident in, no matter, no matter their differences and their identity.
Good morning, my name is Ethan. Da shi na guo y hao ni, tou guo yi du mi you guanai ku chi dou bo baku, ji hai tian nui chen niaku, bo nui chi bo bai du mi you chi bo hai lu mika. Da shi na guo ti bo, gu sa ya du na ku chi ba mi youa, celebrate a new language, their culture. And unlike Andrea, I'm speaking my cultural language today to show kids who are ELA or kids who don't speak English that they will get there.
This is Mr. Cameron. And Cameron is one, I meant a few words, however. Cameron, I am so very proud of you, and I say this before the Board. When you stated, I want you to look at people. And this young man not only is an athlete, he comes in and he gives extra time to the ninth and 10th graders. And Cameron, you could say just a few words, because, again, I'm very proud of you.
What was I going to say? I don't know what to say.
But why do you want to become a teacher?
Well, I would like to become a teacher because when I was younger in the sixth grade, I had a substitute teacher for half the school year. And because of that, I feel like I was maybe a little bit behind academically. And I would like to create a classroom environment to where students will be able to not only learn, but get to know each other. And just, what was it? I don't know.
You want them to get to know each other, so the relationship trust?
Yeah.
Okay, well, say that to them.
Well, just, yeah, just the relationship trust.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Genevieve and I, we have this relationship that I told her that I want to make sure that you guys are aware, that she is an amazing student as well. But Genevieve has, she's working on being able, public speaking. So the Common Core speaking and listening are very important in my classroom and as a teacher. But as you sit here, Genevieve, we're, really, this is a safe place for us. When you think about, why do you want to be a teacher? What comes to your mind?
What comes to my mind is that I want, as a teacher, I want to create an environment for my students where they feel comfortable and understood and listened to while in my classroom.
And Holly, Ms. Holly Jones, first of all, wanted me to apologize for her not being here. Unfortunately, Holly, and I'm sorry for saying her last name. Holly got sick last night, she was actually in the hospital. But I told her, and she was devastated, she, her dad called us and she was just really upset. But I want to let you see through the expressions, her visuals, that Holly's destination, she wants to make sure students have art appreciation, that they understand the importance of art. And each one of these portraits that you see on her slide, this was done by her, handcrafted. She works with our young people in the ninth and 10th grade to work with them on graffiti art and looking at expressional art. So I know that this young lady has a future in front of her, definitely. So on behalf of Holly, we just wanted you to just have a brief moment just to kind of understand her uniqueness. One of the things that we provide for our students is that in our teaching program, I really believe in it being a teaching program. So one of the components is the ethnographic observation that they have to do, that they have to sit and they have to be engaged, they have to take down everything because when you're able to look around and observe, it will get you more in tune because you're actively listening, you're actively thinking. We had the opportunity through Bukhari to not only go down and do our observation a day at the Capitol, but as we were leaving to go back to school, Governor Whitmore came, and Holly was like, Ms. Murray, that's big Gretchen, we've got to go say hi. So we broke the silence just that moment. However, they really took in that observation in full force, that taking notes, listening, and, again, a component that is so needed with our young people today. They want to be heard, they need to have a voice. And, again, the observation was part of my master's program and it was part of their Grow Your Own program. We also believe in building a professional learning community as part of the Explore Program with Lansing Eastern. It is so important to collaborate and network and bring our stakeholders to us, establish these partnerships, because you never know when someone can come and offer us that expert advice, information that sometimes that we seek out but don't necessarily know where to find. So that is another part of the processes they have to do. And then, lastly, our next steps is the completion of the Explore modules. I had the opportunity to work with Ms. Holly Carruthers about four years ago. The modules that the Department of Education have created are amazing. Each student has to go, they go through a walk, the understanding bias, understanding identity, knowing what it is to be culturally responsive, understanding the importance of diversity, and really understanding that every voice counts. So we will finish that up. The students have launched their project base, and Superintendent Rice, I think that you're going to be appreciative to this because they're going to be doing Finding Common Ground through the lens of the hip-hop culture. So we're going to actually build a museum. And the students are collaborating with ninth and 10th graders as well as experts in the field. We had the opportunity to connect with Dr. Emery Purshur from MSU. He came in and did our presentation on how hip-hop culture and education does connect on a collegiate level. So I want my students to think outside of the box. They have to make sure that they employ the Common Core State Standards as well as the focus on literacy. The day at Davenport University, unfortunately, we were not able to go due to the fact that I had a death in my family, and my students were very respectful of that. Placement at Patton Gill, and I would like to turn that over into the hands briefly to Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. As Ms. Murray said, I'm Ms. Robinson, I'm one of the school counselors at Eastern High School. This is our third year offering Teacher Corps, and it's in conjunction with Patton Gill, which is a K through 8 school. And it's in collaboration with the teachers and the administrators. So I'm kind of tasked in speaking with our students, our Eastern students, and figuring out what grade level they're interested in and communicating with administrators at Patton Gill and kind of linking them up with teachers that would be a best fit. This opportunity, students are given a full student teaching experience. Ms. Murray and I go in and conduct observations and do a full evaluation. And then students come and sit with me and we talk about wins, feedback, and then create goals from that as well. So we're very grateful Patton Gill is right across the street from our building and we're able to offer this to our students. It's truly an integral part of growing our own educators.
Thank you. And, again, we wanted to make sure that if you had any questions, that we saved room because we do value your time. Definitely see some familiar faces when I was at Artoy, so I know that the schedule is a very busy schedule. So if there are any questions at this time, we would, we'll make the best attempt to answer them for you.
Thank you very much, students, Ms. Murray, Ms. Robinson. Questions, comments? Ms. Lipton?
First of all, thank you so much. This was amazing, and I just, I'm really, really excited and enthusiastic for all of you and your futures. Just, I do have a couple of programmatic questions. So it sounds to me like there's a, there's a classroom component to the class as well as a practical component. So what, what, how does that look like in terms of a student's schedule? In terms of, is it an elective? And if it's an elective, at what grades are the students potentially allowed to get into this elective?
It is an elective that we offer. So half of the school year, so semester, they're doing the bulk of their, building their portfolio with Ms. Murray and learning classroom management skills and all those pieces. The second semester, they are still working with Ms. Murray, but they're also going to Patton Gill every day and in the classroom with a teacher there as well. So it is an elective, and they can begin the program their 11th grade year. And we really utilize Zello as well, our, yep, our EDP software, to kind of target students that have interest in teaching. And so that's, as a counselor, I look at those things, you know, after their 10th grade year and kind of start targeting students that way through their educational development plan.
And then, do you, do you find that you have enough capacity in your program for all of the students? In other words, is it an oversubscribed elective? Or do you feel that the, that you're at the right capacity? Or do you feel that you could handle more students or less students? What are your thoughts on?
Well, the very first year, I had 22 students. With that, I did feel like that that was kind of challenging because, again, for what my vision was for the program itself, that we're diving deep. I'm not surfacing, I want you to understand really what it is to be an educator and be prepared. Definitely, as Superintendent Rice said, the classroom management component, understanding bias, knowing that you have to be able to listen to, actively listen, building that trust. So with 21, it was quite challenging, but I had a great group. The second year, we had three students. And then this third year, we have five. Ideally, I think that this program, 12 to 15 students would be my sweet spot, per se. And I think that as we continue to build and the success rate and the different students that are coming back, our alumni, to let them know, okay, yep, we were able to make this happen. I do want to share a comment, however. We had a guest teacher from MSU that came in, and Ethan, I was gone because I mentioned that I had a death in my family. Ethan went in and the teacher, and I will not reveal his last name, stated that Ethan ran that classroom better than some of his colleagues. So for me, that was my validation that, okay, sometimes less is more because my students know what Common Core State Standards mean, they know what an ICAN statement is, if it doesn't have the approaches to learning, if that lesson is not, boom, from start to finish, where's my content integration? These are the questions that I demand of my students. And I'm going to be quite honest with you, I love them, but each and every one of them are looking at me like, okay, this is her soft voice. Because I go in, I do. I want them to be ready as an expert when they go in that, no matter where you're placed, rural, suburban, urban, you will be able to understand how to build that relationship trust. So to answer your question, I really would say that if I had that sweet spot, it would probably be 12 to 15.
Thank you.
Other, Ms. Snyder, thank you, Ms. Lipton.
Can you go back to the slide with the artist? Is that right, is that her arm, her tattoo?
Yes.
Yes.
That's really cool. Art and music are definitely a way to communicate culture and reach students. I mean, there's an edge here that she has that will connect her as a future educator with students that need to be connected with. So I'm sorry she couldn't be here.
Ms. Snyder, may I please, I would love to take that back to her. Thank you, because I've had her since like the ninth grade. And it's like watching her, the evolution of her, and I didn't tell the kids, now, okay, now, don't you start acting up. And I'm the one that And I didn't tell the kids, now, okay, now don't you start acting up. And I'm the one that acted, teary eyed and getting choked up. So, okay, y'all won, y'all won, okay, y'all won. But truly, this young lady has blossomed and the connection that she has with Ms. Robinson, again, it goes back to that relationship trust. When you let those students know that you believe in them, but you have those high expectations, look at what you see.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Other, um, other reflections from board members? Once, twice, thrice, Dr. Pugh?
I will just say, thank you. Thank you, um, for, uh, coming and presenting to us with everything that you are doing and it just gives us hope. And we look forward to, to your future. And just thank you for, for what you will bring, um, to students that, that will come. So, uh, and thank you to the, to your educators.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Uh, Mr. McMillan?
Uh, I'm just curious, do students have the ability to take electives for, and get internships for other professions of their choice? Um, medical, engineering, business, any others? Or is it just, uh, just what it's choi-, I know there's probably trades, but is there, is there for all, any, I guess, any, any, uh, profession of the student's choice? Or just certain ones that are chosen by school leaders?
Um, so, uh, we offer dual enrollment at Lansing Community College.
The what?
Dual enrollment. We offer that. Um, but we have a plethora of CTE programs that students are available to use. So through our own Lansing School District, we offer business, trades, graphic tech.
So they can take internships and go to businesses and do that?
They have those built into their program there, yes. They have different, um, I don't think, it doesn't look the same as what these students are doing, but, um, they're, they're getting certifications in many of those programs.
Okay, not certifications. I was talking about just, um, I mean, they're not, are, are these students getting certification?
No, no.
So yeah, whatever these students are doing, are they, are they allowed to do that for their chosen profession?
Um, not as a class. Um, if they're able to get a job in a field they're interested in. Like right now, I have a student that's working in a law firm because he's interested in it. So he's getting work-based learning credit for that. So that's another elective way to get it.
Thank you.
So, so Mr. McMillan, another way of answering your question is there 53 CTE programs across the state? Um, and different school districts, different ISDs are able to offer more or fewer of them in part based on whether they have local millages or not, based on whether local communities feel strongly about particular CTE programs or not. We're going to be talking about that a little bit more in the next presentation. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Other, thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any other, um, reflections by board members?
And I think, I am appreciative because this helps us with one of our primary goals. And I'm forgetting which goal that is.
Seven.
Um, thank you. Goal seven. And so we appreciate MDE for allowing us to see this because we get an opportunity to see what our students are learning, but also how they will contribute in an area and in a space where we are in dire need. So again, it gives us hope and it's a great way to start the day.
So, um, so Eastern students, remind us, um, what your why is and who you want to teach, one by one. We can do a popcorn. I can go straight around the room. Good. I'm glad you volunteered. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ethan. My reason why I want to become an educator is to help kids who are ELA learn how to be the best version of who they will be in the future.
Very good. And what do you want to teach?
Maybe secondary or elementary. I'm, I'm in between right now.
Okay, so you're still, okay, very good. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrea and my why is, I want to have, well, I already mentioned this, but I want to create an environment that every single student will feel confident in, no matter their differences, whether it's language or even if they're like a slower pace of like learning, just having the opportunity for each student to be at the same pace. And I want to teach elementary, which is like kindergarten or first grade.
Not ninth and 10th graders?
No.
Okay, all right. Keep your mind open on the ninth and 10th graders. Thank you, Andrea. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Genevieve. I, my why is I just want us to build a space where I can, my students can feel like they are listened to and I feel like, do like social emotional learning is a very big aspect at our school, but I also want it to be a big aspect in my classroom because I want students to feel like safe and comfortable when they're at school. For me, I want, I'm interested in elementary, but I'm more towards secondary and kids that are a little bit older.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Hello, um, I want to teach because I want to help students prepare so they won't be, um, for the grades, like the next grades above, to where, so they won't like fall behind or be lost in anything that they're going to be learning in the next grades. And I would like to teach elementary.
Okay. And Bakari, if you come out of community organizing, come back to education, that's not a bad thing.
Yeah, um, so I would say, uh, definitely be able to, um, you know, find and, uh, like, like help students find and, uh, open up with their, you know, hidden talent. And for the grade, I would say, you know, give myself a challenge, 10th grade or, you know, 11.
Okay, that sounds like a, uh, plan. I want to thank our, please, Mr. Bullock.
All the things that were said, I, I, I just, I have all the confidence that you guys are headed in the right direction. But I want to put a little twist on something and I'm going to give one of you my daughter's personal number. She's a little older than you guys, but I think hearing from one of you, I'm impressed with this conversation because she's been double dutching on the, I'm going to teach, I don't know where I'm going to teach. And I think if she heard from one of you guys, that would put her over the top. And so I'm going to pass the number along. I want you to mentor up instead of mentor down.
Actually quite a compliment, Ms. Bullock.
Yes, it is.
I appreciate you, um, sharing that. Uh, Eastern Quakers, we appreciate you. We appreciate your reflection. We appreciate the leadership of Ms. Murray and, uh, Ms. Robinson. We are actively growing our own across the state of Michigan. There, there is no one coming over the hill. This is it. This is our cavalry. And we're doing it with, uh, with our students who want to become teachers, with our support staff that want to become teachers. This is how we're addressing our teacher shortage over a long period of time. We're actively working to rebuild the profession. I want to thank our leaders in, uh, in the department, in the Office of Educator Excellence, Dr. Sarah Kate Levand, Dr. Sean Kotke, and their staff. They're doing a terrific job. Um, you keep on keeping on. Um, in a few years, you're going to be replacing us. Thank you. Have a great day. Well, we are going to, uh, we are going to pause for two minutes prior to the next presentation. We're going to take a picture outside. The next item on today's agenda is the presentation on the eight goals for Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Dr. Sucee Carnell, Chief Deputy Superintendent, and I will be presenting. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. And we will begin in 120 seconds. Thank you, board.
No pressure.
Can I do it?
Yep.
Yes, we tested it multiple times, this morning and yesterday.
Oh, I'm glad to hear somebody else didn't know what that was. I figured it was my age. Take it home and ask the girls.
Board wrapper for your phone charger?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Or it could be a pair of really cheap glasses. If you don't need lenses.
Yeah, and you just want the look.
The day that I clip a water bottle into my, or similar to the day that I. Put it on your backpack or whatever. Do you know what a, do you know what a Borg is? Do you know that term? Borg?
Borg, like a cyborg.
So I was, I was using it with my undergrad class, as a pop culture reference in Star Trek. Because there was a group called The Borg.
Oh, I thought they were snide.
And it was like a one, like a high. And my students all broke down in laughs. And it turns out that Borg for them means black outraged gallon. And it's a drinking, this craps play on the weekend. Fill up like a gallon sized thing with all kinds of like Red Bull and all kinds of alcohol. And they were like, Dr. Robinson, you know what a Borg? And I was like, we know about different Borgs.
Your definition is not my definition.
And I'm sad that you told me that. I have to know that. Well, she probably got catheter on the other side. I, one of my students carries a washed out, I think, milk gallon jug full of water. Where'd he go?
You got this.
I do. Will you let me know if I give it away?
You just look like, and I love that.
Good morning again, board. It's a pleasure to be with you with Dr. Sucee Carnell, our Chief Deputy Superintendent, to talk with you about progress toward our eight goals, the Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. A plan that you, board, approved on August, in August of 2020. As you know, there are eight goals of the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. Put on your seatbelts. We're going to move quickly. The two resource upstream goals of the Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, addressing teacher shortage and adequate and equitable school funding, help drive all other downstream goals. Similarly, the developmental upstream goals, addressing the expansion of early childhood education, the improvement of early literacy, goals one and two, and the improvement of health, safety, and wellness, goal three, help drive all other downstream goals, including secondary school program expansion, graduation rates, and post-secondary credential rates. What we're going to do, board, is we're going to do the upstream resource goals, goals eight and seven first, and then course through chronologically, one through six. You know, board, that different children have different needs. Different needs have different costs. And relative to adequate and equitable school funding, we deliberately chose those adjectives. We're interested not simply in the adequacy of the funding, but the equity of distribution of the funding. So here you can see, board, over the last five years, what's happened to the per pupil foundation allowance, that base funding for public education in the state of Michigan. $908 per pupil increase over the last two years, a 10.4% increase in foundation allowance. But not only are we interested in adequacy, we're also interested in equity. And equity is related to a number of different categories of students. We're interested to begin with, with economically disadvantaged students, students who are poor. This is Section 31A funding in the State's School Aid Act. $204 million increase in fiscal year '24 for economically disadvantaged students over a two-year period of time, a $440 million increase or an 86% increase. I can remember, Dr. Pritchett, when this was stuck at $309 million, what seemed like eternity. With respect to students with disabilities, $155 million increase in fiscal year '24 for students with disabilities over a two-year period of time in Section 51E and 51F funding, an increase of $246 million or a 273% increase. Relative to English language learners, you heard our young people from Eastern talk about the importance of English language learning, a $13 million increase in fiscal year '24 over the two-year period of time, a $14.6 million increase, 58% increase. For rural and isolated district students, a $2.7 million increase in fiscal year '24 over a two-year period of time, a $3.2 million increase or a 38% increase. These increases for particular categories of children, Ms. Lipton, who have different needs and different costs associated with those different needs, are particularly critical. We have to fund not heads, but needs in the state. $125 million to reimburse school districts for the cost of general education pupil transportation and a study to recommend the best way to address transportation costs and reimbursement in the future. This is funding equity associated with rural school districts. So much of what we talk about when we talk about funding equity is associated with urban and suburban. This is particularly focused on rural equity because their costs for transportation are so much greater per child. And as a result, there's less money for the classroom for our rural school, uh, districts and students. $125 million for my clean school bus grants. $36 million, an almost tripling of funding for partnership districts, $12 million increase a year for the next three years. $245 million from the School Consolidation and Infrastructure Fund towards the physical or service consolidation of school districts or operations. In addition, there is infrastructure-related funding that is going to be available to local school districts once the school facility condition assessments are completed through this fiscal year. Board, you know that there have been several school finance studies in the state of Michigan since 2015. Released in January 2018, the School Finance Research Collaborative Study, Ms. Jackson, is the largest and most detailed. However, there are limitations even to this extraordinary study. The SFRC recommended that additional studies be done to explore higher concentrations of poverty, transportation costs, and capital costs. I'm pleased to note that many SFRC recommendations have begun to be incorporated into the State School Aid Act over the last two years. And the study and budget gaps noted above are also beginning to be addressed. Ms. Lipton talked about how pleased she was to see the Opportunity Index lifted up within Section 31A funding. That's critical because what we know is higher concentrations of poverty require greater resources to bend the fate of poverty. We also know that it's important to get transportation reimbursement right as a matter of equity. And we know that it's important to get infrastructure funding right as well because there are some districts that simply cannot afford to fund a capital millage or a sinking fund. So if they do something on the capital side, it's the expense of the classroom and children in that classroom. Fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 budgets, board, have been the strongest education budgets in the state's history post-proposed. Fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24 budgets, Board, have been the strongest education budgets in the state's history post proposal A, that is, in the last three decades. Nonetheless, public schools continue to be underfunded in the state by billions of dollars, according to the School Finance Research Collaborative and Other Studies. Board, Goal Seven of the Top Ten Strategic Education Plan is an increase in the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. In this regard, we have four sets of success measures, teacher preparation enrollment, overview of positions reported, teacher and student comparison, and teachers by ethnicity. In addition, we will look at the budget focused specifically on addressing the teacher shortage. So with respect to teacher preparation enrollment, in 2011, Board, 23,000 young people and some somewhat older people were preparing for the profession. That was the year that the state legislature cut 470 dollars per child, required a 20% contribution rate for health insurance, created a new retirement system for people entering the profession. The combination of those factors and others, including the layoffs that rained down on local school districts across the state, created a precipitous drop in the number of people preparing for the profession, Dr. Harmel. It dropped from 23,000 to 9,500, a 59% drop in a half a decade. But that's not the end of the story, is it, Ms. Jackson? That the story continues to be written, and it continues to be written by Ms. Murray, Ms. Robinson, and their young people at Eastern High School, or the young people at Holland High School, or in a number of Grow Your Own programs across the state. In the last five years, a 56% increase in the number of people preparing for the profession from 9,500 to 14,829 young people preparing for the profession. This is a little bit hard to read, a lot of data packed in and a single slide. But notice that in 1516, we had 5.7% of our people that were temporarily assigned or not appropriately credentialed, it's now 12.3%. What's happened? We've had retirements, number one, we've had people leaving the profession for reasons other than retirement, number two, more people are teaching on a permit than did seven years ago. With respect to teachers and students by school year and ethnicity, notice, Board, that in 1516, 92% of our teachers were white, 8% teachers of color. By 2223, 90% of our teachers were white, 10% of our teachers were of color. You look at those numbers, and they appear to be relatively similar. What is lost often are the details. And in the details, you can see that there was a 1,700 person increase in the numbers of teachers of color in the state, 1,700 person increase. Two percentage points doesn't seem like a lot, 1,700 new teachers of color seems like quite a bit. Why is diversity important? Well, our student body is diverse, our state is diverse, our country is diverse. We are preparing our children for a diverse country and a diverse world. And you can see the diversity of our student body has grown from 33% children of color to 36% children of color. Here you can see the growth in diversity in our teacher workforce over the last seven years, an increase in the number of black teachers in the state by 1,300 in seven years, an increase in the number of Latino teachers in the state by 200 over the last seven years. Again, it's important to have that representation, not simply for children of color, but for all children in the state. It's important for them to see the wide breadth of humanity in front of them teaching in the classroom. So this is Tony Spencer, former bus driver in Kalamazoo Public Schools, and now elementary teacher at Arcadia Elementary in Kalamazoo Public Schools. And let's see if we can get Tony Spencer to speak.
I wanted to become a teacher because I've always had passion for children, I've always had the ability to pour into children. But once I was a certified educator and I walked into my first classroom, it was like, okay, now the real thing starts. I didn't have a bunch of choices growing up. At 40 years old, my youngest son, we sent him off to college. And I realized for the first time in my life, I could do what I wanted to do. And I realized everything that had been put into me was designed for children. We desire what we see. If they don't see anyone looking like them in their community being successful, why should they desire to go through this thing we call education? It is difficult to get educated already. They need to see someone who they can touch, someone who comes from where they come from, someone with their background, not just. And when I was a bus driver, thankful of being a bus driver, but someone in a lead position. They need to see someone like them succeeding at the ultimate position in education. That's why it is so important for them to see someone who looks like me.
It is a, it's a joy to be in Tony Spencer's classroom and to see the impact that he has in a different classroom. He certainly had an impact when he was a bus driver, but he's able to have a very different impact in a classroom.
I wanted to become.
Board, when I began in this position, it was August of 2019, and I went office by office through the state legislature, talking with legislative leaders. And I asked legislative leaders a series of questions, one of which was, do you believe that we have a teacher shortage? And as many would say yes as would say no, August of 2019, just shy of four and a half years ago. And I vividly remember a conversation with one state legislator who will remain nameless, Speaker Chatfield. And Speaker Chatfield said to me, well, Dr. Rice, I'm sure there's a teacher shortage somewhere, but it doesn't exist in my district. I said, well, well, that's, that's interesting, Speaker, because I'm going to be in your district in three weeks. And if, in fact, in my conversations with teachers and principals and superintendents, I am told that there is no teacher shortage, I'll be reaching back out to you and saying, my bad, I was wrong. But if on the off chance there is a teacher shortage in your district, they'll be reaching out to tell you that you are wrong. There was nothing in the State School Aid Act to address a teacher shortage, which was rife when I started in this position. Nothing from fiscal year 20 on. Fiscal year 21, we got 5 million dollars, fiscal year 22, 1.67 million dollars, fiscal year 23, last fiscal year, we got 575 million dollars, much of which was in recommendations put together by the Michigan Department of Education, over 445 million dollars this year. So what are those efforts? Well, in fiscal year 23, those efforts included 305 million dollars for fellowships or scholarships, 175 million dollars for the Grow Your Own programs for support staff and students to become teachers, 50 million dollars, Dr. Robinson, for student-teacher stipends, 10 million dollars to ISDs, Dr. Piles, to recruit and hire career and technical education instructors. This year's budget includes 225 million dollars for student loan repayment because we understand that we have to work, Dr. Levand, not simply at the beginning of the pipeline, but deeper into the pipeline as well. 63.8 million dollars for per pupil payments to increase educator compensation, 15 million dollars to pilot a rural educator credentialing hub, 25 million dollars this year added to the fellowships, 50 million dollars added for student-teacher stipends, and a million dollars for MTTC fee reimbursement. In addition, Board, you know that we've leaned into this notion of mentoring and induction. We have to work with our young people who begin in the profession, that first year or two in the profession are very hard. This is 10 million dollars a year over five years to pay for the mentoring of teachers, principals, and superintendents. We believe that they all need mentoring, and all of that mentoring, Ms. Jackson, needs to be paid for. By the way, we believe that new board members need training as well. 5 million dollars important for awards to teachers who hold National Board certification. 5 million dollars for Teach for America, 10 million dollars for the Infrastructure Talent Together, another 66.3 million dollars for the cost of tuition and other fees and associated costs to talent together. Grow Your Own is very big for us. You've heard our Grow Your Own effort over the last year and a half, they've really blossomed, so proud of what we're doing in that regard. And those efforts, as strong as they are now, are going to grow and grow and grow in vibrancy over the next half decade. Grow Your Own includes not only support staff to teachers like a Tony Spencer, but students to teachers like you heard about from Eastern High School. And Dr. Levand talked to you about the Future Proud Michigan Educator Explore Conference that we had last month, so appreciative of the leadership that she has shown and that, that her office has shown in this regard. Future Proud Michigan Educator includes a career and technical education funded program for students who are interested in careers in education, Mr. Miamal, or other fields related to children. This is a partnership between our Office of Great Start, and we're so appreciative of the, the work of people in the Office of Great Start, including Director Richard Lauer, including Director Lisa Brewer-Wallraven, and our Office of Career and Technical Education headed by Dr. Brian Piles. We had, at the height of the pandemic, two efforts, Board, that you may recall, Welcome Back, Proud Michigan Educator, to bring back people who had once taught, but were on the sidelines at some point during the pandemic. And then Welcome Home, Proud Michigan Educator, for those people who had moved out of the state and didn't realize that they really belonged back in Michigan. Registered Teacher Apprenticeships are a new pathway to teacher certification in Michigan. They allow teacher apprentices to earn while they learn. This is not a microwave way of earning credentials. This is, all teacher apprentices must participate in educator preparation programs, obtain BAs, and pass the MTTC. But they get the opportunity to get eye level with children and to do hands-on learning with children, Ms. Jackson, earlier in their programs. So it's not so much the book learning early, it's the kid learning early. Because what we know about the profession is, if you're good with the relationships, if kids are good with you, if you're good with kids, you've got a fighting chance to have an impact on them. And if all you are is just an automaton, if all you are is just spouting off content, you are not going to be successful in a classroom. Registered Teacher Apprenticeships are a combination Grow Your Own programs, a lot of OJT, this is in partnership with the U.S. Department of Labor and MDE's Labor and Economic Opportunity Department. We established the first registered teacher apprenticeship program 13 months ago with Saginaw ISD, Saginaw County School Districts, and Saginaw Valley State University. Couple of other elements that mentioned, Public Act 147 of 2023 passed last month permits retired teachers to return to help out in public schools more quickly and more flexibly under the new law. This applies not simply to retired teachers, but also retired administrators. So there are all sorts of opportunities for people to come off the sidelines and to help us in the midst of this teacher shortage. This summer, the U.S. Department of Education noted that for the period of May 2019 to September 2023, Michigan ranked second highest in the nation in education job recovery. Are we still struggling with a teacher shortage? We are. Are we still struggling with a support staff shortage? We are, with no doubt. But we're second highest in the nation in education job recovery, even though that job recovery is fractional. And we're one of only seven states to have increases in education staffing since May of 2019. So deep have been the plummets in staffing across the country. In summary, a 59% decline in teacher preparation enrollment in the first half of the last decade flipped to a 56% increase in teacher preparation enrollment in the second half of that last decade. Over the last seven years, we've added 1,300 black teachers, 200 Hispanic teachers, we've increased the amount of funding directly dedicated by the state legislature, signed into law by the governor, from nothing in the State School Aid Act to 575 million dollars last year, 448 million, that is over 445 million in fiscal year 24. And our new programs are beginning to pay off in terms of the improvement of quantity, quality, and diversity within the profession. And now I will turn the proverbial microphone and floor over to my colleague, Dr. Suce Carnell.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, Board members. I'm going to start with Goal One. Goal One is to expand early childhood learning opportunities. There are two success measures associated with this goal. The first one is the Great Start Readiness Program, and the second one is the National Institute for Early Education Research, the annual yearbook rating. When we start off with GSRP, we look at the overall funding. You can see here on this slide, for the past 14 years, there has been three significant increases in the double digits. And then over the last four years, there's been two significant increases. The total amount for the overall GSRP funding for fiscal year 24 is 522,720 dollars. That overall funding equates to increase in child, per, increase in funding per child in GSRP. Currently, you can see in the last couple of years, there's been a significant increase in the funding per child in Great Start Readiness Programs. For the fiscal year 24, the amount per child is 9,608 dollars. If a child is in an extended Great Start Readiness Program, the amount is 11,530 dollars per child. Now, an extended program is one that expands the week from four days to five days and expands the year from 30 weeks to 36 weeks. Now let's look at the number of children who are eligible to be served in Great Start Readiness Programs. You can also see on this slide, for the last 14 years, there's been an overall increase in the number of students eligible to be served in a Great Start Readiness Program, with significant increases in the past several years. For this fiscal year, fiscal year 24, ISDs are asking for funds to serve 52,254 students, with 8,700 students in an extended program. This slide shows some highlights or comments from parents highlighting their benefit, the benefit to them and their child in a Great Start Readiness five-day program. The first parent says they like the routine and the schedule of going five days instead of four, and that a five-day program helps better prepare their child. The second parent talks about they're a working family, and they don't have to worry about what to do with their child on the fifth day. The third parent talks about how the five-day program provides extra day of learning. And the last parent talks about they're able to work more hours, and their child is excelling in the five-day program. Now let's switch to the National Institute for Early Education Research, the NEAR. It is the annual yearbook rating, and you can see the line with a star, talks about where Michigan is ranked on quality of our Great Start Readiness Program. We've been ranked number one since 2018. If we look at the last line, this is our ranking for funding level of our Great Start Readiness Program. You can see that in 2022, we're ranked number six. We've moved up from 17 to six. In summary, for Goal Number One, from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 24, there has been a 109% increase in Great Start Readiness Program state funding. ISDs have requested more funding to serve more students of over 52,000 students, which include 8,700 students in the extended program. This is a 40% increase of the number of students served since the school year 2021. The NEAR annual reporting, the NEAR annual yearbook rating for Michigan continues to show that Michigan ranked number one in quality for our GSRP program, and that we've moved up from number 17 to number six in relationship to our funding of GSRP program. Upon our recommendation to the state legislature and the governor, GSRP has been extended to a five-day-a-week, 36 weeks per year. This permits flexibility in this program. Let's look at Goal Two, to improve early literacy achievement. We have three success measures here, the M-Step, M-Step stands for the Michigan Student Test of Educational Progress. The M-Step, M-Step stands for the Michigan Student Test of Education Progress. We're going to look at the third grade English Language Arts scores, the National Assessment of Education Progress, otherwise known as the NAAT for both fourth graders and eighth graders. This slide shows the number or the percentage of third graders that are proficient in English Language Arts. You'll notice there's a gap in the middle because at that time, Michigan, along with other states in the nation, received a waiver for test administration. Switching over to the National Assessment of Education Progress for fourth grade reading, this is a snapshot of students in fourth grade. It's a sample of students in fourth grade, or a fourth grade sample of students that took the NAAT in reading. That's the first line. The second line shows our national ranking based on the scale score. And it's important to note, the third bullet on this slide, that Michigan's average scale score is not statistically significantly different from states that ranked 21 through 47. Looking at a sample of eighth graders that took the reading test on the NAAT, the first line is their scores, or the percentage point of their scores, or their percent scores. And the second line is our national ranking based on our scale score. Again, on this slide, the third bullet shows that Michigan's average scale score is not statistically significantly different from states that rank 9 through 42. Let's look at the fiscal year '24 state budget to improve early literacy achievement. We have $140 million for over two years to grants to improve literacy instructional practice as Section 35J. We also have $150 million allocated to the governors. My kids back on track. This money goes to students who were not proficient in reading and math on the state summative assessment. We also have $10 million for the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, also known as letters. This is professional learning for our educators. We have $14 million that we've given to 10 My Family Engagement Centers. We have $2 million for statewide campaign to show how parents can support early literacy for children. And we have $4 million for Dolly Parton Imagination Library and other early literacy programs that distribute books. So important part of this goal is understanding how kids read. This is the Scarborough's Reading Rope. And at the end of this rope, when students are able to do each of these threads, they become a skilled reader. Scarborough's Rope is broken down into two major components, language comprehension and word recognition. It's important to note that in letters training, there is a unit on phonics, but it's not just about phonics. Letters training will also have a unit on vocabulary, on background knowledge, on fluency. And that's not just about phonics as well. So it takes the red and the blue combined together, woven together, to create a skilled reader. Speaking of letters, the letters, there's two types of letters training. There's the letters training for K-3 teachers, and there's also the letters training that focus on early childhood educators or education. So far, we've had over 6,000 Michigan educators that have registered for either the letters training or the early childhood version of letters training in the past two years. The goal is to train our K-3 teachers. We continue our partner with Lexia Learner to administer this professional development and training. And to date, we've had 340 administrators and coaches that have registered for the letters version for administrators. Another effort through either districts or department is the Early Literacy Essentials through a federal grant from the U.S. Department of Education on Preschool Development Grant Birth to Five. In collaboration with the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, otherwise known as Mesa, they have helped to develop training in two areas. The essential instructional practices in language and emergent literacy for birth to age three, and the essential instructional practices in early literacy for pre-kindergarten. To date, we've had 211 practitioners in the Birth to Three Training and 156 directors and literacy coaches in the and early childhood specialists in the pre-kindergarten training. Continuing on with efforts, we have funding for literacy coaches in the fiscal year '24 budget. There's been $42 million allocated for ISD early literacy coaches. This nearly triples the number of coaches over the past three years. All literacy coaches through this funding must have already received or be progressing toward receiving professional learning through letters training. And we know that effective literacy coaching model is a side-by-side support directly with teachers. Continuing on with efforts, we have the Federal Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. You may have heard it called the CLSD Grant. MDE was awarded this competitive federal grant that allowed, that gave us $16 million over five years to advance literacy skills. MDE selected five districts to receive these funds. Benton Harbor, Detroit, Flint, Muskegon Heights, and Pontiac. Each district receives over, just over $3 million over a five-year period. We are in the fourth year of a five-year grant cycle. And the activities allowed under this grant, or some of the activities we are seeing under this grant, include building diverse classroom libraries, adding high-quality professional development in training such as letters, and increasing family and community engagement. Regional literacy support hubs. MDE received funds and granted funding to 10 local organizations and agencies to establish regional Birth to Five Literacy Support Network hubs. These hubs promote general generational literacy practice. And some of the activities include parent literacy workshops, working with local hospitals, schools, and libraries, and other organizations to distribute thousands of diverse books to children and families. So we talked about how kids read. Let's look at why kids read. Kids love to read when they see themselves in their reading, when they see others in their reading, to learn about other places, to learn about their world. And when that's combined, they can become lifelong learners. Now we will hear from students in the third grade from Fulton Public Schools talk about why they like to read.
My name is Jasmine. I have
You need a third grader.
Yes.
My name is Jasmine. I like to read because I can explore my imagination of the book and pretend to be one of the characters.
My name's Kevlar, and I like to read because it can put us in a different world that we've never experienced before.
In order to help students become engaged in reading, like the two students you just heard about, we need diverse classroom libraries. And to help educators across the state set up diverse classroom libraries where students can see themselves, experience other worlds, the department put together or created a diverse classroom library guidance document and shared it with local agencies or local districts across the state. District and department efforts include also training in diversity in literature for our educators. There are three ways that we did this. One, in 2020-21, we had a virtual conference, and we also had three webinars in the school year '21-'22. With those two offerings, or set of offerings, we had Goldie Mohammed, Nikki Giaboni, Shonda Buchanan, and Derek Slade as keynote speakers. The third way that we have promoted diversity in literacy to help our educators is through our First Annual Literacy Symposium. This was in collaboration with Michigan's Multi-Tierred System of Support Technical Assistance Center. During this conference or this symposium, we had 600 conference attendees, and backed by popular demand was Dr. Mohammed, Goldie Mohammed. At that symposium, we also had an exhibit of a diverse classroom library, and that was with the help of General Education Leadership Network and the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators. Teaching comprehensive history is another way to open up worlds for students. MDE had nine webinar series in collaboration with higher education, cultural centers, and the 12 federally recognized tribes that formed the Confederation of Michigan Tribal Education Department to assist educators with teaching and learning about comprehensive history through thematic instruction. These webinars help educators learn more about historical movements, events, and people. And within these nine webinars, we've had over 970 webinar participants. This is a glimpse at the nine topics, remembering the Holocaust, two and about First Peoples, Asian-American, and the United States, Civil War amendments up to the Civil Rights Movement. Civil Rights Movement that included National and Michigan's View, Equal Rights Movement, Disability Rights Movement, Labor, Labor Rights Movement. And participants also had a chance to understand social study classroom practice and pedagogy. In summary, for Goal Two, we've had the letters training with over 6,000 Michigan educators registered. We have literacy coaches that have nearly tripled. We have our CLSD Grant. We're in the fourth year of a fifth-year cycle. We have our Literacy Support Network hubs. Diverse classroom libraries have increased. We have exposed our educators to diversity in literature through our virtual conference, webinars, and symposiums. And we've also offered teaching comprehensive webinars, history webinars, to our educators. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Rice for Goal Number Three.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell. That was a lot, Board, and we're halfway done. Stay with me. Goal Three of the Top Ten Strategic Education Plan is the Improvement of Health, Safety, and Wellness. We've got six success measures or sets of success measures up here on the slide. In addition to those success measures, we've got a seventh success measure, the extent to which we've got budget in the State School Aid Act to help us drive these success measures. So with respect to food, average daily student participation in school breakfast programs, here you can see a big increase in '21-'22, when we were feeding everyone with pandemic relief waivers from USDA. In '22-'23, USDA did not permit the waiver to feed everyone. You saw a decrease, but with Michigan school meals in '23-'24, we expect an increase again. And Dr. Diane Golzinski and Ms. Melanie Brumler will be telling us about that this afternoon to a greater degree. You know from our presentation last month from Dr. Chapman and Mr. Howell that attendance is up, but it's not back to pre-pandemic levels. And chronic absenteeism is down, but it's not down to pre-pandemic levels. You also know from our presentation last month from Dr. Golzinski and Mr. Hutchins that the number of students who receive school mental health and support services are up. This is a count of the young people that have been served by a Section 31N6-funded provider. These are school social workers out of intermediate school districts. This funding is associated with fiscal year '19. These numbers are not simply a function of increased mental health challenges through the pandemic, but they are also a function of our ability to count better, given that we have more service providers who are focused on this work. This is solely associated with the count associated with these providers, not all providers, not all staff members in a school. Board, when we were creating not just these goals, but the metrics associated with these goals, you insisted that we look at children's physical and mental health, their health, safety, and wellness in a broad set of ways. And one of the ways that you asked us to track improvement was associated with how children were doing with respect to asthma. And you can see that the percentage of children that were ever told that they had had asthma dropped by the height of the pandemic. And similarly, the percentage of students who currently have asthma dropped by the height of the pandemic. Those are dated data. We expect more data next month. Similarly, the percentage of children tested for lead dropped during the pandemic. Percentage of children who had high levels, high lead levels dropped during the pandemic. These also are dated data. These data will be released afresh December 23. The percentage of students who are physically active, a total of at least an hour a day, five or more of the past seven days, declined lightly during the pandemic. And so too, did we see a decline in the percentage of students who used tobacco products or indicated that they were using vaping during the past 30 days. These are dated data. We expect new data December of '24. The percentage of students who were bullied on school property in the past 12 months at the height of the pandemic declined. These data are dated data, and we expect fresh data in December of '24. Remember that these data are typically collected every two years, Board, from one of two sets of assessments, one national, one state. And the frequency was ever so slightly adversely affected in and by the pandemic. The percentage of students who felt sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row during the past 12 months increased during the pandemic. And the percentage of students who seriously considered attempting suicide during the past 12 months increased during the pandemic. Those are dated data. We expect new data December of '24. Michigan's national rank for overall child well-being on the Annie E. Casey Foundation, which has looked at this child well-being metrics for three decades. Our overall rank is 32nd in the nation. We've been between 28 and 33 over the last eight years. This overall ranking is based on economic well-being, education, health, family, and community. It's broader than education, but we do think that it bears mentioning herein. And you thought that it bared mentioning when you created the Top Ten Strategic Education Plan, approved it August of 2020. So what's happening with respect to budget? $160 million for universal school meals. This extends beyond, pardon me, the free and reduced-price meal program of the federal government, money for school meal debt forgiveness, $328 million for Section 31AA per pupil payments for mental health and school safety. This is a big deal, Board. It's a big deal. One, because it's substantial. Two, because it extends beyond public into non-public. Three, because it looks at both school safety needs and mental health needs and provides flexibility at the local school level to address the specific needs that local school districts see in these areas. $50 million for the My Healthy Schools Grant Program to help improve clean air, clear water, to help create clean air and clear water environments. $45 million for school-based health center facility upgrades. $45 million for school-based health center facility upgrades. $33 million for funding for school-based health centers. Almost $29 million increase in that 31N funding, to which I earlier referred. 24.4 million of this, almost the entirety of it, of that increase is for the expansion of mental health professionals, because it's not about the money. It's about what you can convert the money into. It's about staffing. It's about being able to support young people. $6 million associated with the purchase and implementation of tools to identify early behaviors, Board, that could require intervention to prevent abuse, self-harm, or violence in schools. This is an important new element in the state budget. $3 million for grants to purchase firearm detection software. $15 million to create an internship program to help develop graduate-level mental health professionals. A million dollars for a pilot program for districts to distribute feminine hygiene products. And then to the money, in aggregate. So in fiscal year 18, there was nothing in the State School Aid Act for children's mental health. Fiscal year 19, I vividly recall Dr. Diane Golzinski in her previous role presenting to the ISD superintendents about this new-fangled 31N. We'd gotten $30 million. Praise the Lord, and we were going someplace. $30 million sounds like a lot of money. $20 per kid, not so much. And in fact, they're ish the same in the state of Michigan, $30 million and $20 per kid. So that first appropriation, which we appreciated enormously, didn't go very far. I'm pleased to see that the state legislature has has understood, the governor has understood, they've both leaned into the notion of better funding children's mental health. And that funding for children's mental health is up over a third of a billion dollars at this point. Notice that the vast majority of it is nonrecurring. We need to address that nonrecurring nature of that funding, because the reality is these problems are not going away anytime soon. And in fact, many of us, certainly I believe, that our children's mental health challenges have grown into, through, and on the other end of the pandemic. We've added, as you may recall from last month's presentation by Dr. Golzinski and Mr. Hutchins, 1,000 more mental health professionals in the schools in the last three years. That's very salient. And had we had the mental health professionals to hire in the state, my hunch is that we would have hired twice that in additional mental health staff support. BH Works helps us track our work with our young people. Forty-one of 56 ISDs are using this platform. You heard about that last month. You heard from the Howell High School Hope Squad and their peer-to-peer suicide prevention program. I am so admiring of the work that they are doing, leaning into supporting their peers. So often, you'll see peers distance themselves from children who are hurting or in need. These young people are leaning in, and they're giving hope and a model for other young people to do the same thing. So in summary, we've seen attendance increase, chronic absenteeism decrease, but this remains a problem throughout the state and the country. Over the past three years, the number of students who received mental health and support services has increased significantly. We've increased the funding for children's mental health to between a third and a half of a billion dollars a year. More than 1,000 additional mental health professionals added in the last three years. Consider, however, that we have 840 local school districts in the state, though, Board. So put it in that context, and 100% district participation in the Michigan School Meals Program, providing a free breakfast and lunch to all pre-K public school students who want them, Ms. Tillit. Goal four of the Top Ten Strategic Education Plan is the expansion of secondary learning opportunities for all students. In this regard, we're looking at six sets of success measures. CTE, AP, dual enrollment, early middle college, IB, and special education transition services. Let's look at CTE ever so briefly. You can see that CTE increased up to the beginning of the pandemic, plummeted for the one year at the beginning of the pandemic, and we've begun to claw our way back to that height where we were just prior to the beginning of the pandemic. 24% of our children are in CTE programming, the same percentage as pre-pandemic. Here you can see the breakout by ethnicity. Here you can see the breakout by disability, economic advantage or disadvantage, and English learner status. Here you can see CTE completers. And what you see with respect to CTE completers, because what I showed you before was CTE participants, and it's important to take an individual course in career and technical education. But better still is to be taking a whole program of study. And these young people have taken a program of study, have completed that program of study, and you can see that that number increased for four years pre-pandemic, up to 50,000 young people a year in the state who are completing their CTE program. And again, Mr. McMillan, 53 CTE programs across the state. You can see a drop in 2021 and a beginning to re-ascend to that 1920 level with 48,000 young people as CTE completers. Here you can see CTE completers by ethnicity, and you can see the big increases, double-digit increases for all ethnic groups over a seven-year period of time, very much noteworthy. We're doing a great job in CTE, and we want to do an even better job in CTE to close those deserts and to increase CTE participation. Here you can see CTE completers by disability, economic disadvantage, and English learner Here you can see testimonials by Angelo, who is, I think, too busy to look up from his work, and Gavin, who is too excited to show you his certificate. These are industry-recognized credentials and college credits. I believe there are 371 industry-recognized credentials that are available in our 53 CTE programs, our 17 CTE program clusters in the state. Advanced placement. Pre-pandemic, Board, AP was losing out to other efforts of secondary school programming of rigor. And we are, what I would argue, somewhat agnostic as to the form of rigor. We're not agnostic as to whether rigor, Ms. Jackson. We think rigor is important. We think children should self-actualize. We think they should stretch. But whether they stretch in a CTE program, an AP program, an IB program, dual enrollment, early middle college, that's up to them. It's up to what's available in a local school jurisdiction. Every school district is not going to be able to offer everything, but we hope to offer as broad a range of courses as possible in secondary school programming. So you can see a decline in AP through, beginning before the pandemic, into and through the pandemic, and we have begun to increase those AP numbers. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that effort in a moment. You can see the number of students enrolled in AP and the increases by ethnicity here, including a 10% increase for Black students and almost 10% increase for Hispanic students. Here you can see the number of students enrolled in AP and the change over the years by economic advantage or economic disadvantage. Here you can see the number of students taking one or more AP exams, because, Board, it's not simply the taking of the course, it's also the taking of the exam. If you take the course, take the exam, do well on the exam, you have the opportunity to get college credit. And here you can see the decline in students taking one or more AP exams and that increase in the last two years, not simply in the number of students taking one or more AP exams, but the number of AP exams taken. Here you can see the number of students by ethnicity taking one or more AP exam. You can see those big increases for Black students and Hispanic students. Hispanic students well above what they were pre-pandemic. African-American students likewise, and on performance. So with respect to AP exams, you can get a score up to five. Three, four, and five typically give you college credit. There you can see the number of students with scores three, four, or five, and you can see an increase from the nadir of the pandemic, no Ralph intended, over the last couple of years. Here you can see the number of exams with scores three, four, or five, again, from the nadir of the pandemic up to the current year. You can see a one-year increase, 9% increase in the first category, 13% increase in the number of exams with three, four, or five. That's a robust increase, well above what we were pre-pandemic. Here you can see the growth by ethnicity, and you can see not just the one-year growth, but you can see the growth relative to what each ethnic group was pre-pandemic. And here you can see three of our young people from across the state with their testimonials. Olivia, Thomas, and Charis, they all appreciate being pushed. AP is not for every child, but there is something that makes every child stretch in school, and there's something that should make every child stretch in school, whether it's AP or CTE, whether it's early middle college, it's dual enrollment, it's IB, where it's special education transitions services. Our young people should be stretching, and we should work to help them self-actualize. So let's look at the next three categories together, dual enrollment, early middle college, and international baccalaureate. Here you can see, Board, the increases over a period of time in dual enrollment, early middle college, and IB, international baccalaureate. Over a seven-year period of time, you can see that dual enrollment has increased by 9%, 2,500 students over seven years. Early middle college, a major effort of the former governor, has increased 81% over the last seven years. And international baccalaureate, an increase of 14% over the last seven years. This was an effort, Board, to look at the students participating in secondary school programs and a duplicated count. So a young person, Board, can be in one or more of those categories on this particular chart. Here you can see, I'm going down to the last three rows, the total number of young people duplicated count in those five elements, 226,000 in 1516, 238,000 in 2223. Total number of high school students, you can see declined over that period of time. And the average program participation per student, 46/100% of an opportunity of a program per student in 1516 up to 53/100 in 2223. It doesn't sound like a major change. It is, in fact, about a 15% change in opportunity over that seven-year period of time. By the way, we think we can lean into that and do better over the next few years, but we are improving in this regard. And then finally, special education transition services. Board, this first chart shows the percentage of young people 16 or above with an IEP meeting 10 of 10 standards, 100% compliance. And then the bottom chart shows our state-determined standard for students, again, 16 or above with an IEP who are either enrolled in higher education, competitively employed, or enrolled in post-secondary education/training program. We've established a standard at the state level. That's that first row in that second band. It's 75.2%, or was 75.2% in 2021, and the percentage meeting that standard, 77%. So what are district and department efforts in this regard? So we've got a Career Pathways Grant Program that's leaning into creating seamless programs of study aligned to local labor market needs and student interests to culminate in those 371 post-secondary recognized credentials, to which I earlier referred. We're working with the University of Michigan Youth Policy Lab. We just met with two members of the Youth Policy Lab, including Dr. Brian Jacob, who presented to the CTE Work Group, which is referred to in the third bullet, where we're working with Dr. Piles, his team, Dr. Kennedy, and members of the legislature, to interest them in helping us grow CTE across the state. We're using the AP Potential Tool, Board. You know that last year, we sent 40,000 letters to parents of students across the state saying, "Your children are capable of success in AP based on their PSAT scores." This year, 90,000 letters sent to parents of students. I'm going to share a couple of letters that I got from family members about that letter during my remarks of the superintendent in a few hours. But I can tell you, those letters make a difference in children's sense of capacity, children's sense of capability, children's sense of confidence in their ability to stretch and do a little bit more and do a little bit better. We're one of only two states in the nation whose state education agency uses the tool to send letters to indicate the likelihood of student success in AP given PSAT scores. Mostly, this is a local tool. We're doing it at the state level because we want to make sure that children who aren't necessarily told that they're capable, but that are, are told that. Because sometimes, children are told because they have personalities that indicate they have some measure of capacity. But it's not your personality that does the work. It's your mind that does your work. And often, there are a number of indicators that you are capable of this work. This is a partnership with the College Board that's used this AP potential for more than two decades. In sum, we've got increases in student participation in CTE, AP, dual enrollment, and early middle college. 24% of our high school students are enrolled in CTE. We want to lean in with increased study and recommendation of additional funding to address CTE deserts in the state. There are more than a dozen ISDs in the state that don't have millages. Even if you do have a CTE millage, you may not want to cross school district boundaries or school boundaries to attend a CTE program in another school or another district. 90,000 children receiving, or parents of children receiving, letters saying that children are capable of AP success. We've got an increase in the number of youth whose IEPs show meeting all 10 items on the federal standard checklist. And now I will turn it back over to Dr. Carnell for the home stretch.
Thank you again, Dr. Rice. All right, two more goals to go. We'll start off with goal five. We have goal five and six. Goal five is to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school. The success measure that we'll use here is graduation rate. We'll look at graduation rates for four, five, and six-year. We'll look at the four, five, and six-year graduation rate over the past decade. You can see that we've had an increase in these graduation rates, a significant increase in these graduation rates over the last decade. If we drill it down a little bit to the last five years, you'll see that we've had a slight increase in the graduation rate in year four, five, and six. And if we look at the graduation rates for four, five, and six-year students, we will see that we have an increase in year four and six and a slight decrease in year five. Now we look at the graduation rate for years four, five, and six by ethnicity. We'll start We'll start off with Asian students. Then we'll move to Black and African students. Hispanic or Latino students. Statistical significance?
Is there a statistical significance? Yes.
Okay. Native American and Alaska Native students. Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander students. Two or more races, students that identify as two or more races. Students that identify as white. Now we'll look at the four, five, and six-year graduation rates by gender, female and male. Graduation rates by English learners. Graduation rates of students that are identified as economically disadvantaged. Graduation for students with disabilities. And now we'll look at district and department efforts. Heard a lot about CTE at this point. You heard about CTE in Goal Four. It's also a part of Goal Five, helping to increase the graduation rate. It's because CTE makes school more relevant for some students. It helps students to explore their passion, which you heard about earlier this morning, and it prepares students for well-paying jobs. We also have personal curriculums. Personal curriculums modify the Michigan Merit Curriculum Credit Requirements to individualize the rigor and relevance of the state graduation requirements. Personal curriculums are available to students with individualized education plans and students without IEPs in grades nine through 12. And in 2223, we found that 54% of the personal curriculum modification included enrichment opportunities. And 25% of the personal curriculum modifications were used by students with disabilities or that had an IEP. The department shared with local districts a resource guide on how to increase the graduation rate. It helps districts to identify efforts to assist students in making sure that they can obtain a high school diploma. Now we'll look at post-secondary graduation or post-graduation opportunities. In 2022, Public Act 88 required the department to make available to all local agencies, including non-public schools, an information packet to be distributed to each student in grades eight through 12. We worked with the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, otherwise known as LEO, and the Pathfinder Tool was modified. The Pathfinder Tool is a tool that helps a student explore career opportunities and plan for post-secondary education. In summary of Goal Five, we have rising graduation rates over the past 10 years, light increases in the last five years on graduation rate. Graduation rate began to rise over the last year, but there still continues to be differences that exist among graduation rates for students of different ethnicities and among students based on economic advantage, disability, and if they are in English learner status. CTE helps with increasing the number or the percentage of students who graduate from high school. Personal curriculum will help to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school and our graduation guidance tool and the Pathfinder Tool. Last goal, number six. Increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential. This is measured by looking at adults ages 25 to 64 with a certificate or a degree. This slide shows the percentage of adults in Michigan ages 25 to 64 with a certificate or degree. You can see since 2015, that percentage has increased. This slide shows a version of the number of certificates, associate's degree, bachelor's degree, and post-secondary degree. Let's look at district and department efforts. The district and department efforts are broken into three buckets: student opportunities, educator opportunities, and adult opportunities. We'll start off with student opportunities. As Dr. Rice mentioned, and you heard a little bit about it in Goal Four, we have advanced placement, dual enrollment, international baccalaureate, and the college-level examination program. We also have middle colleges and transition services through student outcomes through. You heard Dr. Rice mention that a student can obtain one of the 371 post-secondary recognized credentials available through 53 CTE programs that fall into one of the 17 CTE clusters. Educator opportunities included the Grow Your Own Program and the Registered Teacher Apprenticeship Program. Adult opportunities, which are primarily through LEO, are Michigan Reconnect, the Pathfinder Tool for Adults, Future for Frontliners, and Growing Pro in Michigan. In summary, the state is making progress toward the governor's goal of achieving 60% of adults ages 25 through 64 with a post-secondary credential by the year 2030. And more than half of Michigan adults ages 25 to 64 now have either a certificate or a degree. Students can gain credits through advanced placement, dual enrollment, early middle college, or using or by the college-level examination program. Students also have access to 371 post-secondary credentials. And adults have opportunities through Grow Your Own Programs, Michigan Reconnect, Pathfinders, Future for Frontliners, and Growing Pro Michigan. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Carnell. I want to appreciate and recognize the steadfast and focused educators and support staff across the state, the extraordinary work of the MDE team, small in number but mighty in battle, and the State Board of Education. I want to thank you all for partnership and leadership. I want to particularly recognize Ms. Kelly Siciliano Carter, our Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Implementation, who had the misfortune of laboring long and hard on this work with Dr. Carnell and me. It really does take the entire state to drive these goals, and particularly through a pandemic. So happy to answer your questions.
First, I want to say thank you. This is a very meaty presentation that you guys put together. A lot of data. And it highlights a lot of the positive themes that MDE is working on. I think people don't really understand or recognize the hard work that it takes, you know, everything that goes into what you guys do, including working with our stakeholders and doing things like CAC and different things to make all of these things work. A few things. With the graduation rates, I would love to see foster youth included as a subgroup. As that's something we're working on, MDE, MDHHS, and our legislators. And would love to see that too, so that we could see the growth. You know, that population graduates at 39%. And so we really need to put some focus there. I know we are doing some things, but definitely want to see how those changes are playing out. Page 11, the Teacher Preparation Enrollment. Did have a question for that one. Enrollees have increased tremendously, which is awesome. But the completers, we are not doing well in increasing those numbers. So do you guys have any information on why there's such a differentiation between enrollees and completers? And what are we doing strategically to help increase those completions?
Well, a couple of things. One, it takes, and thank you for the question. It's an important question. One, it takes a minute to change an enrollment status from not enrolled to enrolled. It takes four, five, or six years to get through a teacher prep program. So it takes longer to complete a program than does enroll in a program. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that people bump along a lot of different shoals along the way. They are challenged, as a number of our teacher prep program participants were during the pandemic, by health issues, by their own concern about being in space with young people, but by the challenge of teaching remotely, if they are teaching remotely, and by the challenge of teaching in person, if they are teaching in person. They're challenged by some difficulties that they may have personally, as well as financially or professionally. So all of those, we're working to remove as many of those barriers as possible. You could see the work we're doing on financial barriers. The increases that you saw on that slide from 9,500 in 1617 to 14,829 in 2122, those increases are pre-insertion of $575 million by the state legislature, signed into law by the governor in fiscal year 23. So all of that predates the scholarships, the student-teacher stipends, the Grow Your Own Program funds, and this year, the Rural Credentialing Hub to help people in rural jurisdictions get across that finish line if they struggled early to get across that finish line up north. The loan repayment, because I can start the profession, right? I can finish my program at a university, pass the MPTC, get my certificate, start in the program, but I can struggle in one of a host of different ways. The loan repayment will help me in my early years in the profession. The mentoring in fiscal year 24. The $10 million a year for five years for mentoring induction will help those young people as well. So you're absolutely right. That second column, that middle column on that slide of the three columns, that middle column has to move, no question about it.
Absolutely. My last question is, and thank you for that. Page 45. So first of all, I want to say I'm really happy and excited about the increases. We definitely need to focus on mental health. I mean, we needed to do that before the pandemic, but of course, increasingly so with the pandemic. And I remember you said that, and it's on the paper, that 1,000 more mental health providers have been implemented in the schools. But we could have done 2,000 with the funding. You said we could have done...
I would say it differently.
Okay.
The beauty was, for once in our state's history, we had the funding, but we didn't have the staff.
Exactly.
When we went shopping for mental health professionals, they weren't there.
Exactly. So with the funding, we have enough funding now where we could have had 2,000 slots filled, but we don't have the staff to fill those slots.
For clarity's sake, people wanted to hire more. There's no magic to the 2,000 versus 1,000 number. So I don't want you to hang your hat on 2,000 versus 1,000. But local school districts wanted to hire more mental health professionals. We're not able to. The paradox was, for once in our history, we had more dollars available than staff available to hire.
And we're seeing the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
So I wanted to know, for one thing, and that goes back to capacity. We talked about that this morning.
Yeah.
I think this is a great example of why we need to be thoughtful and why we need to do proper planning on things as a board, and we need to be strategic with our recommendations because, you know, there is funding for this, but there still needs to be that staff. So what are we doing? Because we're doing a lot of focus on the teacher preparation programs, which is amazing as well. What are we doing to help make sure that we can get more people into these professions as well?
Sure. So we have a federal grant associated with expanding mental health professionals. We have state funding associated with this. We're working with partners across the state on this. Dr. Bosinski, would you like to add to any of that?
Exactly right. We have the Smart Internship Program. We have the MyElsys Grant, which is a federal grant to help bring more in. What we'd like to do, what we'd like to continue to do is get into the K-12 system and start encouraging students, just like we do with the Grow Your Own, to look at the helping profession as a viable option.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
To that point, a lot of what our children express as dreams are truly a function of what they experience on a day-to-day. And if you don't, if you're not exposed to a breadth of dreams, your dreams end up being constrained. So not only are we working on this pipeline, which is important for serving kids, we're also not maximizing kids' dreams and their capacity to dream and fulfill their dreams. But I think it's really a twofer. You know, some of this is about dream seeding and dream nurturing, you know, with respect to the individual child or children. Some of it's about a labor market that we need to address.
Absolutely. And then also having those incentives for the programs that we're doing with the Teacher Choice Program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments?
I just have a couple of questions. In Slide 16, you talk about the school facility condition assessment, that there's eligibility for future infrastructure-related funding for school districts that have done this school facility condition assessment. My question is, are those assessments costly for school districts to do? Is that something that would require the school district to invest a lot to even apply for the money? Or is this something that's...
So section, right. So Section 11Y of the State School Aid Act from fiscal year 23 provides for this facility assessment. It's basically system by system, school by school throughout the state. And that's fully paid for by the state. The expectation is that the state bears the onus, the financial onus of figuring out what the facility needs are across the state. Once that study is done, then the dollars that have been initially appropriated for infrastructure needs will flow. We think that that sequential element needs to change. And what we're going to be recommending to our state legislature, when our state legislature returns to action, is that they permit the liberation of some of those funds for emergency needs prior to this study being completed by all districts across the state. needs prior to this study being completed by all districts across the state. Our concern is that you could have a local jurisdiction with a roof issue, not a significant fund balance, no bond, no sinking fund. And so that roof, which they have to replace, because to fail to do so exposes kids, exposes staff, exposes everything below it physically, have to replace the roof. But it ends up being at the expense of their young people, their young people's classroom experiences, their financial balance. So we'd like to see some of those dollars liberated earlier by the state legislature. They've already been appropriated. Don't make this sequential, make it concurrent. Permit the continuation of the study while you are addressing some of these emergent, substantial capital needs in communities that don't have these dollars. In communities that do, this is moot, right? You have a bond, you have a sinking fund, you have a, you don't have either, but you have a major general fund operating budget, doesn't matter. You just pull money and off you go. But if that roof challenges your finances in any way, shape, or form, it really doesn't make sense the state legislature has appropriated funding, but hasn't permitted its use until after the study. Yeah.
So that could potentially happen after the first of the year.
We would, we will be recommending to the state legislature that this be addressed in the next best opportunity, either in a supplemental or in the fiscal year 25 budget. Liberate the dollars. This study is going to take a considerable period of time to do. It's 3,000-plus schools across the state, in 840 local school districts, 56 ISDs, and, and, and. It's just a ginormous study. It requires tremendous A&amp;E firm, architectural and engineering firm capacity. And so I just don't want important work. I was in a school district last week, and three food service employees called me and the local superintendent Ian to show us a leak in their space, in their kitchen. You know, it wasn't good for their health, it wasn't good from a sanitation perspective. The roof needs to be replaced. So I just, I just share this with you, because I know, I know you and I have talked about the importance of helping fund the infrastructure needs of low-assessed-value communities, communities that don't have a big tax base, typically a commercial tax base, that help them spread out the tax impact of a millage.
Right, right. And certainly, you know, it is an equity issue. So from the standpoint of having one of our, one of our goals as equitable school funding, that certainly, certainly speaks to that, having that flexibility. Another question I had was, you talked in Slide 17 about the Opportunity Index as part of 31A, which I was extremely ecstatic about. What do you see the likelihood of that becoming a permanent component of 31A? Do you feel that there is enough understanding in the legislature of the need for an opportunity index? The likelihood that that might become permanent in 31A, or is that something that we'll have to always fight for?
I don't see that, I don't see that, the issue of greater poverty costing greater amounts of money being a politically contentious issue over a period of years. The only threat to this, from my vantage point, would be a policy-financial threat, not so much a political threat, but a policy-financial threat, that if we ran into difficult financial times, people might look at the last elements into a budget as the first elements to be pulled out of the budget. I'm not saying that that's logical, I'm saying that that might happen. I don't think that that would be well thought through. I think that would be penny-wise and pound foolish, but it wouldn't be the first time that people went to the most recent rather than the least important for cuts.
Okay, thank you. On Slide 21, the, the growth in total teacher preparation enrollment trends from the, sort of, the low point in 1617...
From the 9512.
Right, yes. Up to where it is now. That is very encouraging, really encouraging. And I tend to think that probably the investment in the budget that we've made that have allowed teachers to not just have the resources, but also a salary commensurate with their probably is at least a large part, the result of that, that bounce back. In addition to the Grow Your Own, any other investments that, in your opinion, resulted in that, other than increase in teacher salary and Grow Your Own? That seems to me probably the most logical reasons for the increase, but...
So if you were looking at this granularly, the decline, at some point, young people see that there are jobs available. For so many years, there weren't jobs, or substantial numbers of jobs, available in education. We were losing population in the state, live births were down in the state, we were losing 10,000 kids a year in the state. Funding was growing at $50 per kid, $75 per kid. Local school districts were cutting staff in many cases. And then when 2011 hit, and I shared, and you well remember, you were in the legislature in 2011, when that hit, that really exacerbated the layoffs and really undermined the profession in a profound way. But by 2016, you saw an increased need for staff. And young people coming up began to realize this increased need, and they began to vote with their feet. They began to come back to the profession. So there are a lot of cross-currents. There were no additional dollars in 1617, 1819 to address the teacher shortage. It is true that the per-pupil foundation allowance grew, and that permitted us to stabilize funding in local school districts, but not to give significant increases in salary negotiations. Those increases have really been in the last few years. They've been a function of stronger budgets, which now include that $575 million worth of teacher shortage measures, and that $448 million worth of teacher shortage measures. That wave of teacher shortage measures, you don't see in those numbers. You don't see in those numbers for two reasons. One, those numbers stop at 2122. That's number one. And number two, those are fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24 dollars in the State School Aid Act. So the impact of that $575 million, that impact of the $448 million, that's to be seen. We're beginning to see it in the number of young people that are applying for Section 27A fellowships and scholarships. We're seeing a big increase in that. Ironed out the wrinkles in the first year. More scholarships being requested, more being approved. Section 27C, Dr. Robinson and I talked about this, the student-teacher stipends, more than 3,000 of those approved in a year. Section 27B, the Grow Your Own program funding, and then the work from this year, the Rural Credentialing Hub, the loan repayment, all of that, all of those elements are from the last 16 months, 17 months. So a lot is in the very, very recent pipeline. Those dollars are really going to help us jump those numbers. But to Ms. Tilly's early point, it's not simply the early numbers, it's getting kids through the programs, number one. It's mentoring them in space, number two. It's giving them a sense of efficacy, class sizes that they think that they can handle, supports outside the classroom that can help them, and a competitive wage to help them navigate those early years. Because you can't have a small salary and then big loan repayment and expect that to work over a period of years. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Ray. I would also add that during that time for colleges and universities, they saw a dip in enrollment. So they needed to do something for their business to try to increase enrollment into colleges and universities that gave credentials to teachers. And so they did incentives for people, hey, come on back to education. If you come back here to get a certification, then we can do X, Y, and Z. So there were incentives for students going to college and university to get their certificates.
And then just, just one last question, going to the last goal in terms of increasing the number of our graduates with a post-secondary credential. I know I've made this pitch before, I would just ask the department to look at the work that our promise zones are doing in terms of what I would consider best practice, in terms of making sure that embedded within the schools, there's a college-going culture which helps sort of educate students and families about why they should even be thinking about post-secondary. Take a look at the academic achievement in those districts that do have promise zones, because what we're finding anecdotally, although we would like to drill down into it more, is that it's causing children to understand that, well, gee, I better, if I want to go to college in 12, then maybe in 7th and 8th grade, I really need to start thinking about making sure that I do the things that I need to do to make them successful. So there's really downstream. And finally, making sure that our guidance counselors, that we have enough personnel and support in the schools, because we can't expect teachers necessarily to be doing everything. Teaching, we need to have adequate support personnel in terms of guidance counselors. And having a 3 to 4 to 500 per one student ratio is not allowing those guidance counselors to even inform students about the Michigan Achievement Scholarship, why you want to fill out FAFSA, why you want to go to college. It's too much when you have those high case lows. So that is an investment that we can certainly champion, that will have downstream results for our students. Thank you.
I think that's right. Our student-to-counselor ratio is very high in the state, and oftentimes, you don't see counselors at the elementary school level. In fact, it's a relative rarity in the state, not the case in some other states that more substantially fund their students, their schools. Yeah, thank you. Other board members, Dr. Pew.
I guess the environmentally conscious person in me is just like, this is a book. But as Board Member Tilly said, it's a lot of data, a lot of good information that we can continuously pull from and use to cheerlead around and make sure that we continue advocacy to continue on a better trajectory for the resources needed for our children. And to that end, I do want to, you know, just really continue to call out the great advocacy work that the department has done over the years. This didn't just start in this current administration, but even prior to that. And we're finally seeing the fruits of using our voices and just thinking about the health dollars and making sure that we're raising up the linkage, awareness around the linkage between physical health, social and emotional health, and student outcomes, the safe and healthy environments. We've really pushed for awareness around safe environments, healthy environments for our children, and making sure that the resources are going in that direction. And then around the equitable funding, and then the early childhood funding. And again, it does my heart good, and it speaks to the efforts here when we look at our early childhood programs and seeing us continue to remain at number one across this country for our preschool programming. And of course, I have to ask the question, you know, how are we, the department, because this board is responsible for public education across this state, that's what we signed up for, how is the department ensuring the seamless transition, because we're less than a month out? And I recall that I asked for a report, so just wanting to see how the department and the board, maybe through the department, has been engaged in this transition that will happen in less than a month.
Right. So you're referring to Executive Order 2023-6, which affects seven agencies, four associated with the formation of MYLE, the new State Department. And those four agencies are MDE, Treasury, LARA, Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, and LEO, Labor and Economic Opportunity. Each of those is affected, each of them will have employees that move to the new department. Each of these has representatives that meet with Michelle Richard, the governor's aide who's charged with this transition work. Yes?
Those are employees that are coming from one of the number-one early childhood programs in the country, right?
They are.
From this here, okay.
Mm-hmm. So Michelle is working with representatives from each of those four agencies. Our representative is Dr. Michelle Harmel. And she, she has been navigating this water in concert with Michelle Richard. Dr. Pew, as you and I have discussed, we've not gotten an enormous amount of information about this. I can tell you that, from the field's perspective, I don't think that there have been any hiccups. I can't tell you what will happen come December 1st, but I can tell you that pre-December 1st, I don't believe that there are hiccups. There are questions that remain unanswered, and we're hopeful about getting those answers in the next couple of weeks and possibly beyond the next couple of weeks.
So you're not leading those transitions?
Those transitions, this is the creation of a new State Department...
Right, I'm just talking about the part that involves, are children, babies, the early childhood portion, are you leading that portion of the transition?
We are, we are making sure that the people that support our children in those five early childhood areas in the state, Great Start, Head Start, Early Childhood Development, Child Care, and Out-of-School-Time Programming, that there's no adverse impact on those through the period of time where these move over to MYLE. We are still waiting for greater clarity about the post-November 30th elements thereof.
Okay. So if you're waiting for answers, you're not providing, leading in...
We are, we are maintaining the programs through the period of time during which we are responsible. responsible for those programs. Come December 1, it will be a new governmental agency. And we continue to ask questions about where these individuals are going to be working, what conditions under which they will be working, the leadership of the new department, and, and, and.
And then there's $66 million that will go to the Growing Your Own. And then that report won't come December 1. That report will come December 15. That will also give us maybe greater insight as far as what that looks like as well.
I'm not sure about the, I'm not sure about the money to which you refer, but I think the entity to which you refer is the...
I mean, growing together. Did I say growing your own?
Right. So I think those are different entities. I think what you're referring to is the Governor's Growth Commission.
Ah, okay, okay, yeah.
And that has four elements to it. It's far broader than education. It does include education. It includes K-12. It includes higher education, but it also includes other elements as well.
All right. And I was, okay, I was looking at the supplemental budget. And then looking at the supplemental budget, do we have any insight on the debt forgiveness?
Hold on one second. Hold on, I'm getting a call from Marty Ackley. What?
Okay.
Stealing your what?
Okay, all right.
Your thunder?
No, I will wait. I will wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was a wrong number, Dr. Pugh. Not sure who that Ackley guy was, but he was a little incensed.
We will wait. We will wait.
Happy to answer the question, but, you know, I don't want to step on everybody who follows me this afternoon. Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, we got a lot of them. Mr. Bullock, Dr. Pritchett, and second bite for Ms. Tilly.
I'm gonna try to be like quick. It was a lot to unpack and digest, consume. So, but President Pugh brought up some things that I was already thinking about when I was in the legislature. We did a lot on adding the four-year-olds to pre-K. So like, do we have some insight on where we are with that and the funding?
Sure. So funding is up 109% over the last few years in GSRP. In terms of the number of young people in GSRP, we dropped from 37,000 pre-pandemic to 26,000 at the nadir of the pandemic. Up to 38,000 last year. 52,000 slots requested by ISDs this summer. And we're working to fill all of those slots, ISD by ISD, 56 ISDs across the state right now.
And I can follow up with some stuff later, but the other thing we worked a lot on was moving that third grade to the fourth grade. And I saw the fourth grade. But do we have numbers to reflect what the third grade is with the fourth grade?
When you say the third grade with the fourth grade, what, tell me what you mean.
Third grade reading, third grade reading. And then in the report, we had the fourth grade testing or third grade.
Right. I got you. So with respect to third grade M-step results, I think that we are 40.8% of our children at or above proficiency on third grade M-step. And that is slightly down off pre-pandemic numbers. And that was, I think, the first chart that Dr. Carnell shared with you under Goal 2.
Yeah.
Board member, can I just pick?
Please.
Because I did have a question about that, if, explaining a little bit more about these statistical significance of the rankings of nine through 42.
Yeah.
Right. So you're talking about the NAEP funding.
Yeah.
And...
Oh, that was funding.
I'm sorry. The NAEP assessment.
Okay, okay.
So the NAEP assessment is a federal assessment. Fourth and eighth grade. And Dr. Carnell started by saying that these were samples. These aren't the whole populations. M-step is a population.
Yeah.
NAEP is a sample.
Okay.
It's supposed to be a statistically representative sample, but it's a sample nonetheless. And because it is a sample, number one, because the scores come in so close, state by state by state, if you were to test and retest and retest and retest, you would get different orders that take place.
Right.
Over a period of time. So what Dr. Carnell pointed out was that you can be at a particular spot in the ranking one day, the next day, same kids, not just in Michigan, but across the country, testing different order. And so there's no statistical significance between the states in that broad band. NAEP will tell you, don't spend a lot of time comparing cross-jurisdiction, cross-state. They do say you should spend time looking at your scores relative to your own state and how well you're doing longitudinally, how well you're doing over a period of time. And you may recall, the last time NAEP put out its results, it indicated that we had basically lost a generation of improvement nationally because of the pandemic.
Is there, is there a, I don't want to say scientific or a theory to fourth grade versus, and eighth grade versus third and ninth or, like, this is me being curious.
So I might, I almost might defer to Dr. Pritchett or Dr. Carnell in that regard. I don't, from my vantage point, you could flip a coin. I like end of third grade myself, if I had to choose. Things really start to accelerate thereafter. And where are kids before that acceleration really? Third grade, it starts accelerating. Fourth grade, it's really bolting out of the station. So me, I like the end of third grade. NAEP is the end of fourth grade. It's been the end of fourth grade for ever.
Oh, okay, yeah. So I'm looking, my brain is going, you know, like, eighth grade and ninth grade, that's a transition that's usually from middle to high school where it goes ballistic. And so, but I get it.
Well, in eighth grade, to me, that absolutely makes sense, whether or not it should be third or fourth grade. I think that they've stuck on fourth grade because they were on fourth grade. And that reminds me of Emerson saying foolish consistency is a hobgoblin of little minds, or Gandhi saying, if I have to choose between, choose between the truth and what I said yesterday, I'm going with the truth. So I think they should get off that dead horse, myself. But do I, do I think it's worth fighting over?
Just curiosity.
Yeah.
It was curiosity.
When the NAEP representative comes to speak with us once a year, I've got other NAEP issues that intrude earlier in those conversations. Do you have other questions?
No, I think, actually, you did, when we talked about the Great Start rating this program, did enrollment go up as we went to the five days?
This is the first year for the five days.
So we don't have, okay.
But we do have an additional 8,700 students that are enrolling into the five-day program, which is a flexible program.
Okay. Dr. Pritchett.
And I do want to just say that the, on the, I'm sorry, Dr. Pritchett.
No, that's fine.
That on the NAEP, where I talked about the statistically significantly different, that's NAEP's term. So it wasn't our interpretation, but that's NAEP's term.
Dr. Pritchett, to you.
All right. Thank you very much for this information. As I have said before, give me 24 hours and I can be spontaneous, so you will probably get some follow-up questions. But just two real quick ones. On Slide 71, you referenced the Federal Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant, year four or five. Do you know if that's going to be renewed or we don't know yet?
We do not know.
We don't know yet.
Okay, all right. And this is more of a comment that I'm sure you will agree with. On Slide 89, I think the, I appreciate you putting that slide together because I was trying to keep track as we went along with the non-recurring funding. But that is going to be a challenge. And I appreciate the department's efforts in constantly keeping that up in front of the legislature as we move forward and hopefully them understanding the importance of that funding. So I appreciate that chart and just wanted to comment on that. I may have other questions that I will email to Dr. Rice.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Bell?
GSRP, and this is two parts. So, you know, I'm big on growth and expansion, and I think that's great, but I also understand controlled growth. So wanted to know one thing about with the growth and the expansion of the program to five days and an increase of students, how has that affected? You know, we have the teacher shortage. How has the program been affected and does that affect quality?
We'll see just how far that growth goes this year. Because what the ISDs have asked for and what ultimately shakes out may be two very different things. You're right that we have a teacher shortage and it is particularly acute for early childhood education. We have some challenges around space, but I think some of those challenges around space are of our own making. In other words, we've declined in enrollment across the state for many years as a function of reductions in live births and then coming out of the pandemic as a function of other challenges as well. I think we have a fair bit of space in many communities, not all, but in many communities to expand early childhood. What we're doing with that space is a question. So we have to work on space. We have to work on certification issues as well. So you're right, it's not, it's not linear sequential. It's not build it and they will come. It's not have money, add water and stir. It's not as simple as that. It takes a lot of work with our partners in ISDs, with our people in the Office of Great Start, and, and, and. It is not as quick as we would like it to be, given some of the constraints to which you refer.
And then also, you know, some of us are really invested in ECE. You know, I serve nationally on the ECE committee, but I, I really, next month, can we invite the governor's office to do a presentation about what they are doing with GSRP, what the plans are, where we can ask questions? I really feel like this is our, this is, you know, this program is number one and it's major. And we are losing something that a lot of us have really, like I said, been invested in. And the department has done a great job. The department should actually be recognized by the state for its work in this area. But definitely would like to know and have clarity on what is unfolding with this program.
Yeah, and I think that's to Dr. Pugh's earlier point and earlier questions. We're happy to make that point. Stephanie O'Day is listening to our meeting, the governor's representative. And we will, we will make that point additionally.
And Stephanie O'Day is not necessarily over this program or...
No, I respect that. No, I'm just saying that she hears that.
Yes, yes. If we can have someone else come and give a presentation on it, that would be awesome.
Understood. We'll communicate that. Thank you. Other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Jackson?
I'm curious, are there any numbers, and this is going back to Goal 7, with the increase in the critical shortage areas? Are there any numbers saying whether or not the teachers of color that are entering the workforce, are they concentrated in inner cities or are they spread out? Because we know that it's important for children of colors to see themselves, but it's also important for non-minorities to see diversity in their classroom. And, you know, if you have minorities even that live in areas where they are the minority, like my boys, they've never had an African-American teacher. So I'm just curious, are the 1,300 black or African-American teachers and 216 Hispanic teachers, are they concentrated in the same areas or are they kind of spread out?
So it's a great question. I don't know the answer to the question, but I believe that the way we track data permits the answer to your question. Because when I was a local superintendent, I used to track these numbers. So if I could track these numbers, other people can track the numbers, and we can track them in aggregate. So it strikes me, Dr. Levand, that we ought to be able to answer this question. It would be, it would be in, sort of in gross lumps, you know, urban, suburban, rural, or different, we could do granular to individual districts, but there are 840 districts in the state. But let us take a crack at that. That's an interesting point. Is your interest rural, urban, suburban, or is it particular jurisdictions?
Just overall, because like I said, I think that it's important to see diversity everywhere. And if you think about like Grow Your Own programs, you know, if I'm growing the people in my community, then they're staying in the community and not saying that that's not great. I think it's great, you know, you said there's a 59% increase in the Grow Your Own, but I'm just curious, you know, if I'm growing in, let's say Detroit, and that's where I'm from, then the kids in Livonia don't necessarily see the diversity.
Right. And just to note, that 59% was an increase in total prep enrollment.
Okay.
Okay, it wasn't associated with black teachers or Latino teachers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I understand your point. You want to, you want to have some understanding of the distribution of the increase of teachers of color over the last seven years. Got it. Thank you. Other questions, comments, concerns, fears, phobias? Going once, twice, thrice, board, it is 12:50. I appreciate not only your forbearance, but your energy, your stamina, your drive. 1:30, we come back. 1:30, we come back, we rock and roll with public comment, and we hit the last presentation from the morning that we didn't get because we were having such fun with this presentation. Thank you.